Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item I-1.
Good evening, Commissioner. I-1, staff is seeking legislative intent and permission to advertise an amendment to the zoning regulations to allow or prohibit shipping containers as residential accessory structures. Currently, our code does not specifically mention shipping containers. We have a zoning interpretation that considers shipping containers as commercial equipment and does not allow them to be utilized on residential property. And this is because the residential zoning classification establishes characters that the land is devoted to single-family residential development, and it stipulates that the accessory structures are compatible with the surrounding residential. The code also mentions that semi-trailers and tractor trailers and step vans and et cetera are considered commercial equipment. So for this reason, we are seeking direction from the board to see how they would like to regulate shipping containers. So the first option that we have proposed would be to basically codify the current interpretation, which would prohibit them in residential zoning and agricultural zoning classifications. The second option that we have presented would be to allow shipping containers for the use of residential accessory storage buildings in all residential zoning classifications and residential agricultural zoning classifications, pretty much as we currently are regulating accessory structures. So that would be the most permissive. The third option would be in between the two, and that would be to allow the shipping containers as residential accessory storage buildings in those zoning classifications, but develop a set of criteria and conditions that would allow them to be permitted. So we have included that information in your agenda report. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those for you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, ma'am. This item, we tabled this a while ago because 95% of these are up in my district in District 1 and more of the, I don't know, it's maybe rural, but maybe not because it's in residential. And we have a lot of these containers that people have been using for storage and maybe small shops in their backyard. So we had a lot of code enforcements, too. So you guys gave us a little bit of time to start figuring out where we're going to go with these. And I think I like option 3, if you guys wouldn't mind having a little discussion with me. I think they're appropriate where they are, but I think there has to be some kind of criteria as far as setbacks and how they're placed, if they're placed safely, and to make sure we just don't end up having a junkyard in the neighborhood. We have to have these regulated a little bit. And so on the criteria, Commissioner, if you guys would read through that, I did like option 3 because it's the hybrid of the two that they brought. I don't think we should limit the size of the containers or the lot requirements because I think the setbacks will kind of do that by itself. But I think all of the other items that you listed, Mr. Cockings, is appropriate, and I think we need to maybe have you guys come back with some recommendations. My biggest concern of these, and I guess we'll have to have a conversation on these, is these are from China, most of them, and we don't know what type of paint they used on them. We don't know what's in the materials. And so I think they could be a little bit risky. So I would be concerned, and again, I don't know how we're going to, you know, come back with information or how far you get them cleaned down because I know people are using them. But I don't know that I'd want to move my family into one of these because you really don't know what kind of materials come out of China, and they don't take them back because of the shipping, so we got the surplus of them. That's why they're so cheap right now. But I would just give a recommendation to the community as you're doing this to proceed with some caution and to take the steps you need to do to protect your family. But that's my thought, Commissioner. Oh, we've got a full set of lights here. Are they old?
No.
I punched twice, didn't I? Sorry. Is to maybe option number 3 and have some requirements put on it so they could be used like for maybe sheds or storage buildings, but they'd be just, they'd be more of a fit than in a neighborhood.
Commissioner Loeb?
A few thoughts with respect to that. Based on my conversations with staff, there was a concern brought up regarding the shipping containers that have been altered to either put in windows or doors with that potentially compromising the integrity. I'm open to essentially anything, but I think it's something that we ought to at least discuss. If we are going to allow shipping containers without there being a particular size limit, a couple, a couple comments that I have with respect to that, and I don't know that this is what anyone envisions anyway, but I don't think that we should permit them to be in any way we draft this, place between the front entry of the house and the road. The other thing that we may want to at least talk about is precluding them from being visible from adjacent properties, whether we wholly preclude it or we limit it to a certain number of feet over an obstruction, whether it's a fence or a shrub. I think we should at least have the conversation, and if it ends up being something that folks don't want, then that's fine, but I think we ought to at least bring that up.
Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you. And I think we've started to touch on points of why option 3 is terrible. We are going to have so many restrictions on these things. They have to be at a 37-degree angle and visible from the North Star on every other month's Wednesday. And I'm just, I understand the predicament that Commissioner Pritchett is in, and I think it can be handled with less red tape, and that's what option 2 is. We start adding these regulations, and there's a lot of redundancy that's, that's located. And an example would be prohibiting stacking of containers. I think that probably speaks to height requirements. I guarantee you that every zoning class or the ones that these are in probably have some sort of height requirements already, so we're already dealing with that. And, you know, Commissioner Pritchett mentioned that some of these may look awful. I don't doubt that, but if you drive through any of our districts, you will see houses that look awful. We talk about advertisements on, on these, I think was one of them. Do we restrict advertisements on certain houses? We're just going to turn into a 25-page document that is going to be extremely, extremely redundant and cause probably more problems than, than, than what we have. So I think motion 2, which would have the same setbacks as any other structure, would have the same requirements as far as height, would have the same requirements for building standards. I don't think that we should treat these any different because where they're made. My phone is made in, in China, and it is barely out of my hand. So I think when we start arbitrarily deciding where things are made, it's probably not the best direction for this commission to go in. So I would, I would certainly side on option 2. And if, if we have some concerns with visual concerns or anything of that nature, let's look at changing code altogether instead of just changing code specifically for this one type of structure. That would, that would be my thought on this.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I actually kind of liked 2 until I started thinking about, like, it's funny you mentioned stacking them, where you might have like two-story residents there, but these things stacked could be very dangerous. So this is just like a whole nother thing, and these are big, old, heavy things. So maybe we could do 2 and then add a few little extra safety modifications in there that wouldn't necessarily be on a typical shed in a backyard. So even, so I hear you on that, Commissioner Tobias, and I'm with you. I mean, we don't need to put any undue regulations on anything that we wouldn't normally do with the sheds, except these things are so big and heavy. Maybe we could do 3 with all the 2 stuff, but make sure we have a few more safety items in place. Does that make sense?
Madam Chair?
Sure.
So, and I guess this would be for Tad. I know have, have built a couple houses, you know, many inspections take place. I want to go, let's say we went with option 2, and I decided to, you know, build a three-level container shed out there. Can you tell me how the, assuming we went with option 2, would there be any inspection process, or would I just all of a sudden get a crane and stack three of them up and they would be there?
So when we looked at this from the Florida Building Code standpoint, we looked at the container in an unaltered state. And when it's unaltered, we feel that it meets the building code. The requirement and the concern would be wind load and tying them down, just like you do with any shed or storage building. Once you start stacking them, I think that we would be altering that, and what we would have to look at would be getting an engineer to, to certify that it meets the requirement of the Florida Building Code at that stand, from that standpoint. Similar like what we do with tiny homes, if you remember.
I got, I got it. So, so help me here. Couldn't that be, couldn't that be in option 2? I mean, wouldn't we go through, wouldn't we go through the same building codes the way we did if I was building a permitted structure on the back of my property? Wouldn't, wouldn't, I need a professional engineer to sign off on it the same way I would with any other structure?
Once you, so I think all the options, except for option 1, would, would require some sort of permitting. You know, that would, that way we could get the, the tie-down. With sheds, we do do an inspection, so we would be handling them similar to that. Typically, when you get a shed, there is a Florida product approval included in that which demonstrates that it meets the Florida Building Code and that. And so those numbers, that product information is given to the building department, and then they look at it and they take it from there.
So it would be, I'm neither a professional nor an engineer, so it would be completely arbitrary for me to say 2 is safe and 3 is not so safe. But if we relied on your department and the Florida to interpret the Florida Building Code, why would we need to arbitrarily add anything above, you know, like 3 or 4 or 2 or whatever the heck it is? Because I'm concerned about safety, too. Would option 2 provide for safety if there was a permitting process? Would you ever permit a structure that didn't meet wind load requirements, whether it was altered or unaltered, I guess, is my, is, is my question?
No, I think that that's what the permitting process would demonstrate, that they meet the Florida Building Code. I think that when we look at the stacking and coming up with this, what we were looking at was the aesthetic and the impact to the neighborhood, you know? I mean, and I say that from a standpoint of today, we view these as commercial equipment. They haven't been viewed as something that was customary to the residential classifications. So if the board is looking at moving that direction, then to limit that impact, they may want to take in the heights consideration, perhaps some of the advertisements and the colors that they have been painted. As a shipping container may not be customary to the residential character of the neighborhood. So that's, that's why we threw that in.
Yeah, to be very clear, all of that is aesthetic, it's not safety. Is that assuming if we went through 2, you would feel comfortable with the aesthetic nature of, sorry, not the aesthetic nature, with the safety of, of those structures? Is that fair to say, assuming there was a?
If they were not altered, or if they were altered and we had an engineer certification, I believe that that would satisfy.
Okay, you'd sign off on that? You would not sign off that they were pleasing structures, though? That, that is correct.
Similar to tiny homes.
Okay. And one last, does your department make any of those determinations in any other type of building, structure that, that it is pleasing to the eye, or are you merely looking at safety and, and code?
Safety and code.
Thank you.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Okay, that's a pretty good clarification. So let me ask this, because this was the other thing that had me have a little hesitation, because typically people don't put up a shed and move into it. So if we classify it as 2, then we're not going to be still concerned about them moving into it without the right permitting at that point, correct?
Yes, ma'am. What we're looking at here is modifying the accessory structure for storage. So we are not looking at allowing these, or I did not, if, well, I only say I don't think it was the board's intent when we got this assignment to use them as accessory structures for like living facilities or for what we consider like a mother-in-law apartment or something.
Okay, so that's still, that's still cool if we do number 2, because that's kind of why I like number 3 2s, because it had that. But 2 would be cool with that.
Yeah, 2 would be fine, you know, would be, we would be looking at that same thing as it would just be storage. But 2, you lose the aesthetic qual, you lose what would be considered aesthetics or screening.
Okay, so but if they have homeowner associations, they're going to have to comply by that anyways, and if they don't, they can paint it psychedelic now if they want it to, right?
That would be for the homeowners, yes.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And we could just put the stacking in there, correct? Still, even if we went with number 2, we could just prohibit the stacking?
I think that if the, well, if we're doing a look at some other criteria, then we could, then it would be, I think we're kind of in 3, you know, we're, we're looking at the permitted pieces of it, but the conditions would be?
But 3 isn't all or nothing.
No, ma'am, I think 3 is just the idea of, of, you know, ideas of what the board may consider to lessen that impact if they, if they so thought. If you're concerned about them stacking, then they would, that would be alter, there would be altered in some nature, and we would have to get an engineer certification for them to be stacked.
Mr. Bate?
I just wanted to highlight what, what Tad was saying, because really in 3, if any of the bullets in 3 were things a commissioner or the, or the board was interested in being considered, then I would suggest, since this is for legislative intent, it should be as broad as you would want to consider. You could always narrow it, but we wouldn't be able to expand it without re-advertising. So as you look at that, you want to make sure that you include as many of the bullets that you might want to consider at this point.
And I'm not even saying I have an issue with stacking, because if somebody stacks something, I don't know at that point if it would be used as an accessory storage. It would be more for somebody who wanted it, right? So, and we have the setback requirement, and we just, we just put through an ordinance that took us how long with the tiny homes? So as far as like regulation and details, it was, it was crazy, the amount of details we had in there for that. So shipping containers shouldn't be that difficult to?
We just use this as a storage, and we should be fine.
Right. Commissioner Loeb?
Just wanted to invite Ms. Bentley to chime in if there are any legal concerns she has.
Not yet. I think Mr. Bate put you on the right track with the breadth of the ad.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So I'm going to make a motion to do option 3 because we can turn it into option 2 for legislative intent. Is that correct?
I'll second it.
Okay, so that way it's broad, and then we can narrow it down, which I'm probably going to like option 2, but then we can hear all the public that I have and hear what they're happy with and not happy with.
And we may learn something, you know, in the interim.
Right, okay, so that's my motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett.
And a second.
Second by Commissioner Loeb. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, I'm sorry, I had a card. I feel terrible. I'm so sorry. I have one card on I-1. Yeah, I mean, not lots of cards, just one. I'm sorry, come on up.
Yeah, we can always reconsider.
Yes. Mr. Atwell. I apologize. We had so many cards in it. If you could just see why we're carrying up here, I apologize.
We're very broadly.
Yes, it's very broad, so if you're interested in the, us approving them, then?
Yes, I am.
That's a good thing, because we just did.
Yes, it's a real good thing. Well, my name's Jeff Atwell. I live at 3775 Felder Street, Cocoa. And I'm here about the shipping containers. I want to thank all of the commissions for looking into this. My case number is actually in that. It's 17CE02269. I have two shipping containers. I had to remove them because of the interpretation of 11-01. I got our property at Felder Street rezoned from GU to AU to help with the size of the accessory structures. I'm going to put a roof over both of mine so to connect them together, so it'll look like a single structure, and it'll be sitting on pillars. It won't be sitting on the ground. It'll be strapped to the ground just like you would a building like Ted Sheds. But on Ted Sheds, I could take a claw hammer and throw one of them and go through the side of the building, and my Conex box, you could do that, and it'd bounce off. So there's a big difference there. And I hope you'll let us take care of this. And I'm not just thinking about myself, I'm also thinking about everyone else that has these storage containers that they're using. And I also want to thank all of the people that have been on my side to get this done, and also the staff of Commissioner Pritchett, because I've been pestering them for eight months. Every week, I stop by. Thank you.
I apologize for us missing the card. Lyndon Campbell, you're on the other side. We care about what you have to say, so don't think we don't, we care about what you have to say. Was it missed on purpose?
Right.
I do.
Does this work?
Should. Might need to turn it on.
What do I do?
Don't help you out?
Okay.
We sat through the puppies.
Yeah.
There's three if I can get them.
No, I think they're new. I can't keep track.
Press them twice in a row, relax.
There's two of them.
This is anticlimactic because you already voted, so try and keep a sense of humor.
Do you have a name and date of birth?
Pardon?
Name?
Lyndon Campbell, 5005 Fishtail Palm. I was a little disturbed of how this was going. I understood you all were Republican, and in fact, some talked about defending business and being business-friendly. The prohibitions that occurred here did a lot of damage to small business. The groves are full of small business. I wouldn't be surprised if half of them out there are running small businesses out of their home. I know a couple of these specifically were harmed. I thought Republicans were for smaller government and business-friendly. How it's been doesn't seem to be. The Conexes were their business. This is increasing government intrusiveness. The staff report, while they mentioned a few locals, they referred to Miami, which is a Democratic hotspot, and then they went all the way to the west coast of the United States to the socialist centers in California and Portland, Oregon, San Diego and Portland for references as to how to decide. That disturbs me a little. Something that wasn't mentioned, I stopped and talked to Commissioner Loeb about this issue, and he said they wouldn't want it out in Lansing Island, and I absolutely agree. If somebody was really kooky and tried to put one in, there probably should be zoning to prevent it, because I don't think the neighbors would be very happy. However, when you move out into agricultural, not residential, agricultural areas, the remote, the backwoods, like a good part of Canaveral Groves, I haven't done an accurate count, but I would estimate currently 20 or 30%, and that's probably conservative, already have these. You may not see them, they're there. You've got to look. It's appropriate to agricultural operations. Works very well, it's efficient. All sorts of small business that is ag-related. The county gives specific exclusion for steel buildings for residential applications. I'm sorry I didn't make up enough. I'd like you to look if you can, it requires looking around, but the building on the bottom is an arch building that is legal by code, whereas on the top is a container. It's made out of the same material. The big difference is a container is only eight or nine feet tall, and that other one is 25 feet tall. If something's an eyesore, to me, it's the big one, not the little one, because the little one looks like a little Ted Shed. If you need a pitched roof, is that the problem? It's not hard to put a pitched roof on it. You were talking about stacking them. My daddy was a trucker when I was little. These were just coming into use. You look at the ships coming to the port, they stack those loaded 10 high on the deck of a ship. They're incredibly strong. The 20-foot is good for 220 miles an hour loaded, and the 40-foot is, I'm out of time.
And I think the concern was living in them stacked. I think that's what the concern was.
Okay, a comment to what was said earlier. There are several federal agencies that regulate the paints, the materials, and everything. Most steel that's used in this country now originates out of China and a good part of the paint. So it doesn't matter if you're getting a container, or somebody mentioned their phone, or numerous other items. This is made in China. Maybe you want to get rid of it.
I was actually concerned more on the engineering, like if you put windows in those things, you hurt the integrity of it.
Valid concern. You can disturb their integrity by punching holes in them, depending on how big the, but one more point. The ones with wood floors, the floors are treated with toxins to prevent infectious agents being transferred. Unless they're treated like painting, they shouldn't be lived in. It's, it would be dangerous. And that's not because it's out of China. It's because of federal regulation requiring pest control.
Okay. Commissioner Pritchett has a quick?
You do know this Republican group up here is trying to pass this through. You do know this, this Republican group up here is trying to pass this through. That, that was just like my motherly fussing about China, just because of all the baby milk that came over, and we've had some instances. And again, that's personal, but if I see it's made in China, I typically don't buy it myself. But that's just personal, and that's just you guys to watch over.
Well, you could stick with Marlboro.
Marlboro?
That's made in this country.
Haven't gotten the smoke since I was 13, so.
The, the point is, there are toxic and unethical products made in every country.
I, I know, I know, but that's just something I'm throwing out to you very motherly, it's probably not commissioner-y at all, but Republican-wise, we're on it.
You've got to know who your enemies really are.
And it's a preference on whether or not you buy from a communist country.
There are, there are probably a few containers still made here, but not very many.
Yeah.
Commissioner Tobias, did you want to speak now? Did you want to speak to that other gentleman?
No, I just, you know, neglected, because I was focused in on 2 and, you know, went with 3, but I, I'd like to make a motion that, that we do not process new complaints for shipping containers, because I know that we put a moratorium, I don't know when that moratorium was going to end, consistent with the proposed ordinance, and whether we come with option 2 or 3 or some combination, that upon adoption of the code revision, we delegate to the special magistrate the authority to vacate any order of finding a fact for existing cases involving shipping containers used for residential storage facilities.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Loeb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I have that one, too.
Okay, Commissioner Loeb?
Just a question for staff on that same vein. Would it be helpful to have a second motion authorizing a continued stay on enforcement for violations that are in process, or do you want to handle it on the back end? I just, I want to make sure that you have every tool at your disposal.
I believe that we have enough with the, with the motion, and we, and then when we come, once the board adopts an ordinance, then we can reevaluate those, those complaints and see where we, where we stand and see what action needs to be taken.
Okay, if you're happy, I'm happy. Thank you.
Do you have an idea of how many of those we have, or?
We have found that there were seven active, or seven code enforcement cases since the, since, since we developed the interpretation.
Okay, hopefully we can clean those up.
Yes.
All right. They're going to bring back an ordinance, and it's probably going to be pretty broad as far as what we have, and then we're probably going to scale it back to make it less restrictive, if that makes sense. The restrictions that they're going to come back with aren't ridiculous, it's just that we probably will peel back a few of them that we don't want.
Means you're probably going to come see me about six or seven more times.
Yeah. But I think the commissions express the desire to allow them, so.
A mine has been removed from my property at an expense to me. Can I bring it back? Am I going to?
I wouldn't do that yet. I mean, not, not without action of the board, just to be safe.
Well, it's already cost me $1,500, because I had a special magistrate.
But there was, there was nothing in place that allowed you to have it in the first place, even though what, I mean, you can agree or disagree on whether or not you should have been violated. You probably weren't allowed to have them to begin with, but.
It would have been nice that I wouldn't have had to have moved them, because during the last, when you guys had the last hearing, I had a special magistrate appointment that week, and code enforcement never called me to tell me that it was canceled. So I could have easily gone to that special magistrate, missed work because somebody couldn't call me, and they did have phone numbers to reach me. I didn't get that courtesy. I didn't get that courtesy. I got the nice legal letter in the mail, but they couldn't contact me directly. I had to call them, and thank goodness I found out before the appointment. Because my time's valuable, too.
Yeah. I mean, I wish I could solve the problems of past, but all we can do is try to solve them moving forward. And we'll try to do right by you guys. And I'd love to converse with all of you, but it's probably not. Of course, yes.
Defang code enforcement.
What's that?
Defang.
Right.
We're willing to do anything as far as modifications, putting them in the ground, painting them, you know, to make them aesthetically pleasing.
I think we're going in the right direction.
Yeah, and we can't dialogue like this, only because I can't get it on the record, and that I'm talking to myself on a recording, and no one knows who's talking, and so, we got you.
Well, if you have my name in the code enforcement, I'm one of those that would have been fined.
Okay, we're going to move on to the next item.
Thank you.
County attorney? Wait, wait, I'm sorry, we skipped one. Gosh, we move so much stuff around. Item I-3, I apologize. We have a lot of cards on these.
Maybe let's go ahead and have public comment first.
Probably, because you probably need to introduce.
Do you want me to introduce it? Okay, I can do a brief intro and then address it after public comment.
I mean.
In short, essentially, the COC met, I sat in on their meeting, addressed them during the meeting, gave them the opportunity to ask questions. Obviously, speaking is one of five, not on behalf of all five. There, initially, what we passed left a portion unallocated, and this is going back and allocating some of the funds that were, up to this point, unallocated. They just had not gotten any sort of recommendation from the COC. I believe that just as we passed a portion of it before, if there's no controversy and there's no reason to delay it, and there's nothing that's going to be gained from waiting on this, we should go ahead and pass that portion as well. This is allocating, the dollar values are all in there, but this is allocating a good-sized chunk of what remained unallocated. We will still have portions that are unallocated after this is done. I believe it's just shy of 47 million will remain unallocated, so we're essentially allocating the difference between that and what was left unallocated roughly 100 million before. But essentially, that's the gist of it. I'm happy to speak more after public comment, but I think at this point, maybe we go to public comment.
Well, I've been to offer the commission the same courtesy we've been doing for every other item. Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I would agree with that. I was able to watch the meeting, where you guys hashed it out, and I got to see Commissioner Lober there. And so I think the process works. You guys, it was brought back to you, you came up with some changes, even though they weren't the ones I wanted. At least it followed the majority of the board, which I appreciate it. So you came back with some new recommendations, and so I'm going to look to pass this tonight, because I don't want to slow it down any more than we might have already. So I think the due diligence has been done, and I think the process has worked. And although it's not exactly what I would have liked, I think we have something moving forward, so I am going to vote in support of this.
Okay. I thought I had a bunch of cards, but they were J-3 as well with these, so Ms. Barker, Courtney Barker, and after Courtney, M.J. Waters?
Thank you. Courtney Barker, City Manager for the city of Satellite Beach. I just wanted to lend my support to the board and to supporting this item. We're hoping to get this passed, so we can, you know, kind of make sure the community knows that we're moving along and getting these projects done, and I appreciate all of your support. I appreciate you coming to the meeting, that was great. And before I leave, I just wanted to congratulate Commissioner Smith on his award from the Marine Resources Council. So thank you all very much, and, you know, every time I come to one of these meetings, I appreciate you more and more. This is a long night, and so thank you all for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you. M.J. Waters? And after M.J., Louis Kotnick?
I'm M.J. Waters, I live in Melbourne, Florida, and I am here to echo Courtney's support for this. I think it was very wise of the people who created this ordinance to put in an annual review for flexibility to update the plan as needed, and I'm really pleased to see that the process worked, that the COC made their recommendations, brought it to this board. The board had some questions, concerns, sent it back, and then it came back with some adjustments made. And I think that shows that it's a good process. And we have that oversight committee involved, which I think really is important to the citizens of the community. It's very important to keep this moving forward. We have invested time and money and permitting and processes to get these things going, and I think keeping those things moving is really critically important, because every day, hundreds of people, thousands of people sometimes, are moving into this county. And so it's not just we have to solve the sins of the past, but we have to plan for the people who are coming in the future. So it's time to keep it on track, and I hope that you will vote in favor of this, so we can keep going. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tremendous. Good evening.
Hi.
Lou Kotnick, here in Melbourne as well. And I echo what's been said before. I thank you for your action, and I think the process is working. And my real point is just to echo that, I think it would, we want to have the continuous flow, right? I mean, we've got a 10-year plan, we know that there's more to get done even than that. So please go ahead and adopt it, and let's move forward. We're going to have many more years here together. Thanks an awful lot.
Thank you. Beau Platt? And after Beau, George Rosenfield? I think he may have left.
In the interest of time, I'll just say I'll echo the.
Name and address real fast.
Excuse me, Beau Platt, Melbourne, Florida. And I'll just echo the comments made by Ms. Waters and Mr. Kotnick. Thank you.
Thanks, Beau. Well, there goes George, I thought you left. You usually sit up here.
I was going to leave, I had another engagement at 7 o'clock, when I decided this would be more important.
Well, thank you.
My name is, my name is George Rosenfield, I live in Suntree. I am an environmental scientist with a master's degree from what became the New York State College of Environmental Science and Forestry. I can't even remember. I think, in those days, environmental science, in those days, environmental science was not a science. Forestry was the environment. I specialized in forest management and photobehindment. Muck dredging versus the sewage problem, both are important. We need to remove the muck and stop depositing new muck. We need to solve the sewage problem. I don't believe it is an either-or problem. If we fix sewage, if we find sewage violators and use the fine money to go back and make improvements, that would save some of our tax money. Otherwise, maybe a 50-50 split, but that is not scientific, but is better than not doing anything. I know Ms. Barker's knowledge and group is doing fine in their resolution of the matter. The problem is not political, but scientific, and where each is needed the most. Let her group have their reins and do continue what they're, with their plan. Thank you.
Thank you, George. All right, Commissioner Lober?
Okay, I just want to say, before I go into some questions, it's going to take me a couple of minutes here, and also to the speakers, to Ms. Barker and Commissioner Pritchett, please don't assume that there's going to be a motion following this, I'm not up to anything, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page. I'm going to have a request at the end for the COC, as opposed to a motion directing that we do anything, if I can have a little bit of liberty to address staff with it.
Sure.
All right, let's start out with Virginia. Mucks on average, 1% to 3% organic, is that right?
Yes.
And then, is it not so that raw sewage is generally chock-full of compounds which break down into ammonia, which further break down into other nitrogenous molecules?
Yes.
Okay, last question for you. Following Hurricane Irma, excluding the municipalities, Brevard County's wastewater system discharged approximately 22 million gallons of sewage, of which we know, is that your understanding as well?
Yes.
All right, now I believe we have Eddie somewhere. Is he trying to sneak out on me? Okay, good. Good man.
It looked like he was running, didn't it?
Yeah, I was going to say, he's smarter than I am if he was heading for the door. All right, Eddie, I've got some questions for you, several questions pertaining to the Riverside Drive force main. The current pipe that's in place is a 24-inch PVC pipe, is that right?
Correct.
And the current force mains experience multiple breaks along its length, correct?
Correct.
Is it not so that these breaks have resulted in sewage spills that directly or indirectly impact the Indian River Lagoon?
Correct.
Now, this force main, as I understand it, carries raw untreated sewage for treatment to the wastewater treatment facility, does it not?
Correct.
So as a direct result of this force main releasing raw untreated sewage into the lagoon, the Department of Environmental Protection has ordered Brevard County to make the necessary repairs and improvements to eliminate the potential of future discharges, is it not?
It's part of the consent, yes.
Okay. Now, is it correct that we have no choice but to complete those repairs prior to December of 2020?
Correct.
Based upon that consent order?
Yes, sir.
So the pipe that's presently in there has been in there somewhere between roughly 10 and 15 years, is that right?
Correct.
And the pipe's lifespan should have been in the range, give or take, five years of 30 years, is that right as well?
That would have been my estimation, yes.
Okay, in that ballpark. Is it your understanding that some portion or portions of this pipe is, I'm sorry, that they are or may be defective?
I don't know defective, it's.
Subject to breakage?
It's subject to breakage.
Now, is it your understanding that the fabricator of the pipe, the actual manufacturer, may have faced lawsuits over alleged defects with this particular variety of pipe?
I know the county went through litigation years ago with regard to a portion of this pipe, I do not know if this portion of the pipe was under that same litigation.
Okay, with respect to that, is it your understanding that potentially this manufacturing defect may well be largely responsible for the lifespan of this pipe having been reduced to a fraction of what was anticipated?
I'd have to resort back to find out what was the discussion and findings through the litigation.
Without having, I'm just looking for basically your best understanding at this point. If it's not perfect, that's fine. Is that your understanding? I'm just trying to establish why we're getting 10 to 15 years out of something that should have lasted two to three times as long?
That's been the story of what's been conveyed to me to present on.
By staff?
By staff.
Okay. Now, absent this particular variety of pipe, which may be defective, but we're not completely certain, we wouldn't ordinarily be replacing pipe 10 to 15 years after it had been initially installed, would we?
No.
So your plan to upgrade this system involves totally replacing, I'm sorry, totally removing the 24-inch existing PVC pipe, replacing it outright with a larger diameter pipe made of a more resilient material, is that right?
Correct.
So you're also going to, in addition to that, be installing pressure surge tanks at two existing lift stations along the main, is that right?
Correct.
So is it your understanding that the brand-new, larger diameter pipe made out of ductile iron, along with the pressure tank, should largely, if not completely, fix the issue of this particular stretch of pipe being subject to breakage and leaking untreated raw sewage into the lagoon and therefore polluting it?
It'll greatly reduce the probability of an event occurring, yes.
Now, it's fair as a result to say that these measures of reconstructing the force main and constructing pressure tanks will result in improvements to the force main?
Yes, sir.
Is the anticipated lifespan of this new ductile iron pipe more than five years? I don't need to know how much beyond, but is it more than five years?
Yes.
Now, how long generally does it take for the state to process a loan request? If you know, if you don't know, that's fine.
It's quick, because we've already been pre-approved.
Okay.
The project's been pre-approved, and now it's just a matter of the contract and the documentation being submitted.
Okay, now I have a few questions for Eden, and I've got, I'll try to keep it as brief as I reasonably can. Is acceptance of the proposed sorrel plan with a modification a permissible option for the B.O.C.C. under the sorrel plan and the associated inter-local agreements?
The ordinance provides for inclusion, inclusion and modification, or non-inclusion?
So essentially, we can accept it and modify it, not that that's what I'm proposing at this point, nor will it be what I'm proposing this evening.
Modification is an option, depending on your definition of modification.
So with greater specificity, following the COC submission of a plan to the B.O.C.C., does ordinance 2016-15 specifically permit modification on the part of the B.O.C.C.?
Does, use that language, yes.
Okay, as to the DEP, so the Department of Environmental Protection consent order, in lieu of paying a cash fine to the state, do we have the option, instead of implementing an environmental enhancement, environmental restoration, or capital slash facility improvement?
I think that's what we're doing.
Okay.
Eddie could confirm that.
And then a question for John, and I promise I'll be wrapping up soon here. So when does hurricane season begin?
It's May 1st, I believe, June 1st.
June 1st, okay, so we're coming up, all right. I'm not making a motion at this point, but I do want to ask that the COC, when we come up to this workshop that's coming up, please have already some discussion with respect to this item. I'm going to approve, and I assume everyone else will, the Riverside Drive item that was earlier in the agenda that hasn't yet been addressed, the consent item, but I would like you all to at least consider whether you end up approving it or not, looking at including this as part of the sorrel plan. I'm not going to go around your back and play games and try to do it right now, but I would like you all to look at it. I think this is extenuating in the sense that it's not routine maintenance by any means, and my plan isn't to do this to prevent the county from borrowing, it's to do this so that we can use the money we otherwise would borrow, or to continue to borrow, and then spend it to replace even more pipe. So I'm not looking at basically shifting the cost from one side to another, but again, if you don't recommend it, you don't recommend it, if you do recommend it, you do recommend it. But I would like you all to at least consider that, and have some discussion available at the board workshop that's coming up. So that's all I've got, but otherwise, I would move to approve this as listed. I'm not asking that we do anything with respect at this point to the force main that I discussed, I just wanted to lay that out there and put it in the record, so that the folks on the COC are well aware of what I'm asking them to do.
A second for discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Pritchett?
I just wanted to mention, Commissioner Lober, we already approved that.
Oh, did it already get approved?
Yeah.
And the consent?
Did we already get through it?
Yeah, we did consent.
You weren't out here when we did, we did consent.
Oh, okay.
We waited for a bit, but you were.
All right, I stand corrected, thank you.
And we'll have to go through it with that, but that's the one thing that kind of gives me a little hesitation, is when it's something that's on the enterprise fund, that is something we probably should be doing anyways, which we are doing, but I mean, I don't know if we can tax the whole county for bad decisions made in the unincorporated area. So that's a little bit of my hesitation, just so you know, moving forward with the ideas with them, because, okay, I live in the city of Titusville, and I pay that water bill, when they have blowups, I'm paying extra into that, and they're not getting sorrel funds to fix it.
Right, no, I understand. My, and in terms of that, I'm not asking, I mean, it could have been phrased as a motion tonight, I'm not doing that. I'd like to give them the opportunity to consider and address it, it would not be fair to them, in my estimation, to basically let them come do their public comment, and then turn around and say, thanks, now that you don't have the opportunity to respond, let's go ahead and accept it with this modification.
Right, I'm just letting you know that baseline that I have, that's something I struggle with, because I feel it's almost an unfair tax when we do that. Do I think we should fix it? Absolutely, absolutely, you know, we need to do what we need to do. Actually saw some information coming around recently, where the Brevard County fees for water are almost $10 a month less than all the other municipalities. So I think we need to fix that fee base. I know you've heard me go on with this many times, but that's going to be something, I'm going to have to loudly vote no one if we move that from there, but I, do I think we need to fix it? Yes.
Right, I'm just looking at a discussion.
And as far as new projects, yes. But I just, I would tell you that ahead of time, because it hit in that little vein right there, that I have a real big heartburn problem over.
You know, I'm not trying to push that this evening, or necessarily even later, I just, I think it would be a healthy discussion for us to have, and, you know, again, I just want to make clear, I'm not suggesting that we use the 11 million out of sorrel, even if that's what the COC recommends, and then say, gee, it's 11 million less that we have less that we have to borrow, I'd rather continue to spend the money we otherwise would have spent and just improve more of it so we have less gunk going into the lagoon. But again, I'm not pushing to do anything this evening.
Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you, and I guess this would be for the county manager, since he hasn't spoken at all today. Looking at consent, F3, just for a point of clarification, we only authorized you to set an application for that loan, we did not authorize you to, or, to go ahead with the loan, so should Commissioner Loeb want to continue with this, what we approved on consent doesn't obligate us, is that, is that fair?
It was permission for me to sign it to, so we would execute the application to submit for the loan, that's what that item was, yes.
We've submitted the application, that process has been done, and we've been selected. This motion is for to give the county manager the authority to sign all...
Sorry. To do the execution of the loan agreement.
So, in other words, it ratifies that, correct? Ratifies the loan, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Loeb?
Just briefly, if you know, is there any prepayment penalty?
No, not with state, can you pay it ahead of time?
Right, without having to subject ourselves to pay some additional costs as a result thereof?
No, there's no prepa, there's no penalty with those.
In addition, Commissioners, it's a reimbursement loan, so we spend the money, then we get refunded, or not refunded, but we get the loan money, and then that's when the loan becomes more active, the, so, if we decided not to get the money for the loan because we were doing something different, then the loan would be reduced by that amount.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we're not doing anything?
No, I just moved to approve, and it's been seconded.
All right, Commissioner Tavaia?
Since, I feel, I feel bad, since we voted on consent, you know why Commissioner Loeb wasn't here?
I mean...
I don't have a problem leaving it be.
Okay, because, yeah, I understand, I understand, I was just going to, a motion to reconsider to see if...
I think it's okay.
Okay, then.
I appreciate the thought, though, thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Okay, county attorney now.
We're requesting permission to advertise for an executive session for the case of Brevard County versus Cruz, which is the north end of the St. John's Heritage Parkway, for the 23rd at noon, or right after the board meeting ends, whichever occurs first.
Make a motion to have an executive session?
Happily seconded.
On the 23rd?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett for an executive session on the 23rd, a second by Commissioner Loeb, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item J3, and I have cards for this as well. Go ahead.
All right, item J3 is a citizen request to allow golf carts through the I-95 Vieira Boulevard interchange. The Vieira Boulevard overpass and interchange with I-95 is owned and managed by the Florida Department of Transportation as limited access right-of-way. As such, Brevard County is not authorized to permit the use of golf carts through the interchange, but the state does have, has established a criteria for the safe operation of golf carts, which our code is based on. Brevard County Code, Section 10672, provides the minimum requirements when considering whether a sidewalk can be approved for use by pedestrians, bicycles, and golf carts combined. While the sidewalk meets the eight-foot width requirement, minimum width, it does not meet the requirement to have a four-foot wide minimum grass shoulder that would allow golf carts to be able to yield to the other vulnerable users of the sidewalk. Along the overpass, the sidewalk is physically restricted on both sides by barrier wall, which doesn't allow the safe operation of two golf carts side by side or passing each other. Approaching the overpass, the sidewalk includes a two-foot shoulder on each side, and then the slope can be as steep as one foot vertical to, for every three foot of horizontal distance from that shoulder. So, the citizen request suggests that a solution could be to allow one-way golf cart travel through the interchange. While that suggestion does resolve the physical constraint issue with the two golf carts attempting to pass one another, there are still a number of safety and feasibility issues that are still present, so. In order for F D O T to consider their request, Brevard County will need to submit a proposal to F D O T District 5 Traffic Operations. We've included this information in the staff report that's attached to this agenda item, which includes some exhibits showing the one-way golf cart travel, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Do you want questions first, or can I?
Let's, yeah, let's do it that way.
Okay, I have public comment cards if everybody's still here. John Fantoli, and after John, Anna Maria T.
We lost John.
Hi, name and address, please.
Anna Maria Taya, 945 Shaw Circle, Melbourne, Florida. I'm a freshman at Vieira High School, and I would like to thank you for allowing us to present our concerns and hopefully provide a solution. I understand that the final decision to the matter at hand is up to the Florida Department of Transportation, but our goal here today is to get you on our side. The golf cart usage in Vieira has boomed over the past few years, serving as an alternate transportation option for many people. I personally used our golf cart to get to and from school, to socialize with friends and to get to and from the golf courses. Although a bus is available to me, I am involved in several extracurricular activities that require me to stay after school or arrive early to school. The golf cart was the solution to this problem, of which working parent would, will drive me. This is also a problem to many other students like me. Vieira is a master-planned golf cart-friendly community, but I guess that was only meant for West Vieira, leaving East Vieira out of the picture. Let me just remind you that without East Vieira, there would be no West Vieira. Furthermore, the waste of time and resources used to enforce the current golf cart ordinance is ridiculous. A friend of mine was pulled over for going 18 miles per hour on a 15 mile per hour sidewalk, showing that the police officer used the speed detector to measure how fast he was going on a sidewalk. After interviewing, after interviewing my parents and other adults, asking if they would get pulled over for going three miles per hour on, over a speed limit, all answered no. Currently, we have over 1,000, 1,400 supporters on a petition that we have started. I would just like to state that we do not support underage golf cart driving and the driving of golf carts exceeding the capacity that they are built for, and these should be enforced. I hope that this is all taken into consideration and that the one-way crossing over the 195 interchange is supported by the board. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good job.
Linda Schick? Is Linda still here?
Oh, wasn't it?
Linda Schick?
No, she's dead.
Okay. Tanya, is it Feck or Tek?
Taya.
Hmm?
Taya.
Oh, it's, yeah, my handwriting isn't great, so...
Taya, okay, I'm sorry. I'm usually pretty good with things, too.
Good evening, my name is Tanya Taya, 945 Shaw Circle in Melbourne, Florida. I would like to thank the board for the opportunity to speak today. My husband and I immigrated from Germany in 2002 to the Springs of Suntry in Florida. We have seen our sleepy town go to a big town. People always use golf carts in our community, they are part of it. It definitely increased over the last several years, and we saw more people using golf carts. Golf carts traveled from East Vieira to West Vieira and vice versa, since the bridge opened in 2007. Many residents traveled to the Fields of Rec Center in West Vieira, church, the avenues, Duane Golf Course, and Vieira High School, just to name a few. Few. In all those years, I have never seen a golf cart pulled over by police until March of this year. If going over the bridge is a safety concern for the golf carts, does it mean that we should have the same safety concern for bicycles and pedestrians? A walker has to cross two crosswalks to go over the bridge, crossing the street that a vehicle has to enter and, and exit the interstate. State law gives pedestrians the right-of-way. Will the police enforce vehicles to stop? We all know how dangerous this is, so why not banning the pedestrians and bicycles as well and build a separate overpass? Did the county and state overlook the progress of a changing community for which golf carts have been part of it? Why is our local and state government ignoring trends such as golf carts as a form of transportation and chooses a designed taxpayer-funded infrastructure, infrastructure that is unsafe for a good amount of people? We know Commissioner Kurt Smith's staff is working hard on a plan to present a model to F D O T allowing One Way Golf Cart, One Way Golf Cart Travel Through the I-95. I hope the board can see the desire of people traveling from east to west and vice versa using a golf cart. As you may know, a petition allowing golf carts crossing the intersection received over 1,400 signature, signatures. We are all for safety for us and for our children, I, we do not support underage golf cart driving. However, the legal age of driving a golf cart is 14 years old. I also do not want a golf cart cross over I-95 if it's unsafe. Communities change, especially smaller ones, not to mention the benefit of new changes often improve a community. Having a golf cart allows for a community with less traffic and which creates a smaller footprint on the environment. Think about it, if you have 50 golf carts, you have 50 less cars on the road.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. Bill Hobson, and after Bill, Barbara Goran.
Good evening. Cut that down some 12 minutes, I thought I had five, but I guess I only get three. So, I'm just going to try and summarize what I've had to say. I moved here in 2005, been a resident at 919 Delta Way in Springs of Suntry. In 2007, when the bridge opened up, it really opened up a new area for us because we all avoided the Wickham roadway and the circle from hell. It gave us access to church, schools, shopping, so much more. For 12 years, I've volunteered and coached baseball. The golf cart gave me the ability to drag all that gear and my two kids to the fields three times a week and be able to get the gear up there without having to lug it out from the parking lot, it was a really good advantage, and on the way home from the games, the boys and I would communicate about what happened during the day, and it was, it was a nice event and a good way to communicate with my boys. I never thought it was illegal to go over the bridge. In 2008, when I got my first golf cart and started going over the bridge, I saw a sign on one end and a sign on the other end, and nothing in between, you know, on the east and west side, so it said, you know, golf cart friendly, go, 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 so I never thought that it was illegal to go over the overpass. It wasn't until 2016 that the county actually put in specific writing that you couldn't go over, and that was in 16-22, it was adopted. But from all my research, I find that all the commissioners are in favor of more liberal golf cart use incorporated into the community. This is a golf cart community, whether the people like it or not, you know? And so, by cutting off the throat at Vieira and at Wickham, there's no way to get to the other side. So, I encourage you, I know, and I want to thank Kurt Smith and the staff for meeting with us a couple of weeks ago to hear this issue, but the, the, the 10, the 10 years that I've been going over that bridge, I've never experienced a problem with blocking somebody out, a pedestrian, a bicycle, anything. If one, if you saw another golf cart coming, you'd back up and let, and, you know, give courtesy, let them get through, and then you would go through. So, it can happen. Cars and bicycles can get along, especially on the intercoastal waterways where they got the bike lanes, cars doing 55 and 55-plus, and the bikes going way less than that, but they, they seem to coexist just fine. I think the golf carts can, can do so as well, and I think I'm out of time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barbara, and after Barbara Goran, Ray Ross.
You look familiar.
You're a trooper, Barbara.
Yeah.
Barbara Goran, Vieira, Florida. I think what I was going to speak to about the golf carts really doesn't pertain to what this issue is in Vieira, east and west, so I should probably...
What did you have to say?
I was very concerned about the golf cart usage and just watching the kids on Wickham Road.
It pertains, it pertains to the subject.
Okay, this happened a couple of years ago. I was at a stoplight on Wickham coming toward Vieira, and two young ones in the cart were, did not stop, they were on the sidewalk, they did not stop for the traffic light, they kept going across onto where they should have waited for the traffic light like cars do. They continued on down the road, or down the street, and I watched them, and I was really concerned because I could see an accident could happen so easily, and I was scared to death for these kids. So, I watched and watched, and I got caught at another traffic light. They, I watched them go up past, toward, past McDonald's, they went into the chicken place, Chick-fil-A. So, I followed because they had done a couple of things that just terrified me, and I parked in the parking lot, and I went in, and I asked them if they were the ones with the golf cart. I didn't threaten, I was, I just, I went there as a grandmother, watching these kids, and I thought, "Do you all have driver's license?" No, they didn't. I don't know how old they were, they could have been 14 and 15, they could not have been that much older. And I said, "Well, I watched you, and you did not observe the traffic light," and I was very concerned that another driver wouldn't see you, wouldn't, was not going to be aware of you. And then I watched you come down, cross the other two shopping areas, and I, and I just want to warn you that you really need to be careful, because I don't want to hit you, I know other grandparents don't want to hit you, I just want you to be careful. So, when they're not home and they're out on their own, they just really need to be extremely careful, and we need to be extremely mindful of what they're doing. I had a little bit more, but...
Thank you.
You know, they appreciated my talking to them.
Oh, good. They were respectful?
They were extremely respectful, we got along well, I just wanted...
They better have been, or I would have come after them, no, I'm just kidding. Thank you, Barbara. Ray Ross or Pos? I can't tell if it's a P or an R.
I'm going to go with a P.
Yeah, okay. Was it Ross or Pos?
Pos.
Okay. All right, that's all the cards I have. Commissioner Loeb?
So, this is, this is one of those items that I think we ought to give some deference to the commissioner in whose district it most directly pertains. With that said, I'd like to approve it if we can do so in a safe way. I know that recently we had a TPO meeting in which Scott Ellis was the speaker, and he was discussing one of the fancy-new D O T, not crosswalks, I forget the name for the type of beacon that they were using, but essentially, the point and the relevance here is, it doesn't really matter who has the right-of-way if you're dead at the end, I mean, you can be totally right and totally dead, and I just, I'd like to support this, assuming your D4 commissioner is in support, and I believe based on what I've heard he is, but I am concerned to a degree that we don't do anything that's going to give people a false sense of security, because the last thing I want to do is try to do the right thing and have a dead kid as a result. I used to live, before I lived in D2, in Vieira East off of Clubhouse, so behind Ralph Williams, directly used to that, and I can tell you, I do remember from the time that I was there, there was a golf cart vehicle collision on Murrell in that stretch right between Barnes and Vieira. It was not pretty, I don't want to see that anywhere else, so, you know, if there's some measures that can be put in place with whatever's put forward for approval, I would feel happier about it, but again, it's something in D4, so my intentions is, my intention is to defer to the D4 commissioner on this one.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I can't wait to hear from the D4 commissioner, but I got a lot of hesitations with this. Brevard County is not authorized to permit the use of golf carts through the I-95 Vieira Boulevard interchange as it's state-owned and limited. interchange as state-owned and limited to access of right-of-way. So this really isn't even our road. And so I'm not sure that we even have the ability. And let's say that we do, someone hears us doing it, and they go on there and get hurt. I think we're opening up a situation, I don't know, I'm not real comfortable with it, seeing kids up on golf carts on the top of an interchange. I have a lot of hesitation on that because I also am a grandmother and a mother.
No, you're not that.
I am. Might be having great-grandkids next five years. So I got a lot of hesitation with this because I'm not real comfortable with it, so...
Commissioner Smith?
Well, as I'm sure you guys are aware, and we have looked at this in great depth. I've spoken to our staff about it. And the most reasonable thing that we can come up with that may work is to create a one-way situation so that golf carts traveling west would go across on the right side, and golf carts traveling east would go one-way on their right side. So I would like to ask staff to go forward with that and approach FDOT with that idea and see if we can't come up with some way to make that fly and get their input with that as well, and see what happens. I'm with all of you. It's a scary situation when you're having golf carts driven by 14-year-old kids that don't know the rules of the road and don't know stop signs from red lights. And hopefully their parents are teaching them before they allow them to use their golf carts. But we can, we can all imagine the horror that would occur if one of these kids or an adult was injured or far worse, killed, going across the Viera Boulevard exchange when it was just a simple bridge going across. Going across safely was one thing then. It's entirely different now because with the diverging diamond, there's traffic coming in all directions. And it's going to take quite a lot of talent and ability to navigate that. So if we can get FDOT to weigh in, I'm all for it. And so that's what I'm asking staff to do, is to do that, get them involved and see if it's possible. And if it's not, it's not. Because, yeah, we're going to have, we're going to have a division between east and west. You're absolutely correct. But the hope is that if spyglass overpass gets approved, if we can get started from the beginning and try and get inclusion so that we can be golf cart-friendly, accessible, and dot all the i's and cross all the t's to make them safe and get FDOT's design approval, then that would be the next step. So that's in the future. But that's, that's where we have to look if we can't get this passed. And I would think even if we can get this passed, we still need to work with the idea that spyglass would be golf cart-friendly and accessible.
Commissioner Tavaia? Were you done?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay, Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you. And I think this would probably be to staff. I have no idea what the Florida Department of Transportation would say, but assuming they gave us an approval for a plan like this, who would cover if there were additional costs, structural costs? Is that something, you know, I'm not familiar with anything like this, asking for additions on state highways. Would you expect that additional cost to be borne by the state or the county?
That would be definitely the county. The state's going to require that we conduct an engineering study to submit to them that evaluates all the safety aspects of the golf cart use. It'll include a review of crash history in the area. They're going to want to make sure we've considered all safety aspects. As far as the cost of any, of any bridge modifications, that's already been considered, and it was determined when the Viera interchange was under design that that was going to be too costly to modify or even consider replacing the bridge to accommodate the golf carts. Any additional costs will be, have to fall on the county.
Okay. So follow-up on both those. Thank you so much. How much, if we were to go through, forward with this and ask FDOT for that ability, the engineering studies, how much staff time are we talking?
Well, initially, we're going to write a letter to FDOT on behalf of the board and request their initial approval or denial before we proceed with any engineering study. We would need to get a consultant to conduct the engineering study.
But that only happens once we would get a conditional...
Yes.
If we don't get rejected?
Yeah, I don't think we would want to do that until we get an idea of FDOT, if they would even allow it.
Okay. And that would then come back to the board, you know, assuming we got the thumbs up from FDOT, that would come back to the board before we went through with that study, I assume?
I believe so.
Okay. And do you recall, if we put in the request for the modification of the bridge to allow for golf carts, that was cost prohibitive? What is, do you remember what cost prohibitive was in dollars?
I don't know the amount, but there was some discussion during the...
Tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands? I have no idea.
Commissioners, it would require modification of the bridge, widening of the bridge, and that's an extremely or exceptionally costly thing. It would be, and it would not be hundreds of thousands, it would have been in the million kind of category or above.
So let me, let me ask you, I would pose this question to the board before we move forward. I don't want to put anyone's hope, but, I mean, and I don't mind asking the Florida Department of Transportation what they thought, but if they gave us the conditional okay and we knew, assuming we would get that, and we knew we were on the hook for potentially millions of dollars, is that an answer, is that an answer we want then to make that decision? I don't think that that's fair to get any of these folks' hopes up if we do get a yes and then we have to pay, or if we are to modify, it's our responsibility to do that. So I certainly would like, you know, the commissioner in that district...
That's not going to be part of the equation. The idea here is to get them to come up with some solution, if possible, with the existing bridge. There's no, no idea that that bridge is going to be modified. There's no money to do that. It's strictly regarding the bridge as it exists. And if they can come up with a design with the existing bridge to allow, and the only thing, the only idea we came up with that's even possible is the one-way solution. And if they don't deem that as a possibility, that's as far as it goes.
So we would only be asking for a safety, not a, not a...
Correct.
Financial commitment? Is that, that's what the letter would clearly state? Is that...
We would specifically be requesting, we would present the idea of the one-way golf cart travel.
Okay.
And showing our initial findings of that and see, ask them to respond.
Would that need an engineering, would that need an engineering study?
No.
Yeah, commissioners, we would, we would make the initial request. They would make, the way they're, the state has a process for this that they've prescribed. And what it entails is an initial ask by us. They then respond with either a yes, you can move forward to an engineering study, in other words, they didn't say no, but it's a conditional yes based on more findings that might, that would come forward with the study. Or they could just say no. If their assessment of it is that it's just not going to work, then rather than putting you through, going through the whole study, they'll just tell you no at the beginning. And so if they say yes to a study, then we do the study. They'll give us some parameters that they want to make sure that we consider as part of that study. And then we would, you know, get a proposal from a consultant to do that work. And the, and then presumably, you know, if we went forward with the study, then eventually they would review the study and either make a decision yes or no after that. And it could very easily be no at that stage. And then you would go through a design process where they come up with, you'd come up with an actual design if they said yes after the study. And then they still have to issue a permit for that, for you to make any of those changes. And so in this particular case, what we're anticipating asking for is principally comprised of signage, and there's some peculiarities associated with the intersections, the signalized intersections that we'd have to address with DOT. And so our hope is that they would feel enthusiastic or confident enough to tell us yes, that if we, that they thought we would get a real yes at the end, or they would just tell us no, and we wouldn't have to go through the study unnecessarily.
So two quick follow-ups. Study cost, obviously, they're going to ask for parameters, but can you tell me how much staff time? Or you said we would have to go get a consultant to do that. And number two, for the benefit of the folks that have spent so much time here, what's the timeframe once the initial request for this actually to be permitted by FDOT? You've done this before. Oh, I am not holding you to anything, you know, is this a year process? Is this a...
We actually have not done this before. This is, this is a new thing.
I've never heard you say that before, John.
Yeah, I'm sorry. This is actually something we have never done, and I asked around to a couple of other jurisdictions to find out if they had done it. I don't know if Karina has found anybody that's done it. So the truth of the matter is, right now, I really don't know. We're kind of in uncharted territory. It's charted in the sense that DOT has a process. What we don't know is how their staff is going to view it. I will tell you that, as I think you already know, DOT tends to be very conservative. So we'll, you know, I, I don't want to say I don't have high hopes for it, but it's going to be an argument, so to speak. We will advocate for it, but in the end, they're going to have, they've got the final word.
And do you know that, did you, would the study cost be borne internally, or is that an outside consultant that we would need to hire for that?
We would need an outside consultant to do that. I can tell you, our, I just speak for staff right now, we are dozens of studies behind in getting things done that are stacked up, trying to do them internally. And this, to do something that's a whole new thing...
Got it.
That's, this is not the type of study that we would want to be doing internally.
Yeah, final question. That would come back to the board for an RFP or something before we authorized a study? Should we get back an affirmative from FDOT? Is that a fair assessment?
We could certainly do that. If the board direction was to do that, to come back, we could develop the proposal based on what DOT said they wanted in the study, get a proposal from a consultant, and then we could bring it back to the board at that point.
We'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
And finally, and this goes out to the audience members, on Pineda Causeway has no business having a bike lane, no business whatsoever. It's not safe, but there is a Senate president, a former Senate president, that made it happen. So because you get the conditional okay to go forward with this, and I will be voting in the affirmative, my suggestion to you is contact your state representative and state senator, as they have a heck of a lot more sway over the Florida Department of Transportation than any of us will. And if there's a bike lane over the Pineda, a golf cart over that bridge is an easy, easy ask.
Good, good advice.
Well, probably not a good idea to call public comment back up because then we'd have to do that for everybody who asked. And I'm just going to comment because it's gone around more than once. I don't feel comfortable with this, and I'm sorry. I mean, I know that your commissioner is working hard on your behalf. I've just seen too many wild drivers, and maybe that's your teenagers. Maybe it would be mine if they had a golf cart. But I don't, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the idea of us even asking for this because I don't believe it's the safe option. I mean, we just airlifted an 11-year-old, and I know that just happened, and it's not good PR for the golf cart community, and it's probably a lot less than what it could be. But that driver was with his parents, so he probably wasn't driving. We're not talking back and forth. You've had a chance to talk. I think that there are golf cart communities, and there are certain areas that are safe for golf carts or that should be, but we get the same request from Beachside, too. And we have the highest pedestrian kill rate, you know, around. I mean, it's not something I want to brag about. I am not comfortable with this at all. Golf carts are golf carts. Golf carts are made for the golf course. And it's no different than grabbing it, jumping into a go-kart and jumping in there and saying, "I'm safe," because who's regulating those golf carts? And I'm a little uncomfortable with, I mean, I've almost been hit by a golf cart at Chick-fil-A, of all places, and we were just talking about Chick-fil-A. I mean, that was one of those places, and I was on my way to a meeting. And that would have been pretty awful. But the kid was apologetic, respectful and otherwise, but he had a whole pile of his friends on with him, and they weren't paying attention. And I'm not saying I'm worried about my safety. I should be paying attention to where I'm walking. What I'm saying is, is this is, safety is a lot more important than a high schooler's opportunity to drive a golf cart to Viera High School, in my opinion. Because I have to drive my 15-year-old to school, because I don't even want her on a scooter on de Groot, because I worry about her safety. And this option here, as far as the one-way traffic, would it be a solution if there was a bridge possibly? But then we're asking the opposite traffic to drive on the sidewalk. I don't know that that's a very responsible counter option for the traffic traveling the other way. So I'm not going to support this because I, I think the risk is too great. I don't think, you know, I think that there's pockets of areas that you could justify driving golf carts around and to do it safely. But, you know, even if we asked FDOT, and even if you knew a senator, you could call Commissioner Tavaia to make that happen, it doesn't mean that it's always the best solution. Look at, look at the Viera circle. Tell me how that, that is a safe option. No one knows how to drive it. I mean, that's the reality of it. It should never have been two, two lanes to begin with. So it's, sometimes government doesn't always make the best decision, but I'm not going to take a chance with, with kids' safety. I just won't do it. Everybody got awfully quiet.
Time for the next, next issue.
You've got to make a motion to move forward.
Okay, I want to make a motion then that we request staff to approach FDOT with our idea of a one-way on each side and seek their input.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Tavaia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. So motion passes 3-2 with Commissioners Isnardi, myself, and Commissioner Pritchett. Negative. And so again, this item will come back to us before we expend any money. Great, thanks. All right. Item miscellaneous, number four. Is this yours, Commissioner Tavaia?
Yes, Madam Chair. Last year, the board voted 5-0 to harmonize county contracting requirements with those of state requirements. This resolution is even more simple than what we did with E-Verify. Rather than requiring terms be included in a contract, this just says certain items will not be included. All this resolution does is take the requirements that we already have to follow for projects that use more than 50% of state funding and applies it to our projects. These requirements simply ensure that we do not tamper with the free market, such as mandating in our contract that employees pay a predetermined wage rate. Thankfully, the county does not engage in these uncompetitive practices, so this would have no immediate impact on us. So then why is this necessary? Other jurisdictions have gone this route and upended the construction market. An example would be Miami Beach, that attempted to go even further than what statute allowed and prescribe a wage rate of $15 an hour, which has been struck down by the courts. Not once, not twice, but in fact, three times. Of course, litigation is not free, especially when you lose, and that leads to increased fees and costs. Miami-Dade County, Broward County, and Palm Beach County have all taken steps to go back, to go down the path of single-source labor for particular union workforces. In conclusion, Brevard County thus far has taken the conservative path of not meddling with the free market. This resolution would ensure that we stick to this path and harmonize our requirements between county-funded projects with those that are state-funded projects. So I'd like to make a motion for approval of this resolution pending discussion.
Second.
I was just going to second it.
Oh.
Ooh, beat you to it.
You did.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You probably do have a card on the next one.
I got a couple. I have three cards on this item. Did you want to introduce it first, Commissioner Tavaia, before calling up public comment?
Sure. First of all, I want to apologize. I'm doing something that I probably give people a hard time, and that's for changing things on the fly. However, I think these changes are not too substantive in nature. Rusty Roberts, Representative Brightline, took issue with something in this resolution regarding the number of derailments that have taken place. While he agreed the number of derailments specified in the resolution was likely accurate, he asserted his company's position that many derailments are mere technicalities. I will accept this position and amend the resolution to remove that particular reference. You'll see that's struck down there. While we can quibble with the definition of a derailment, I think we can all agree that death is not a technicality, so I've included more details of said deaths in this resolution. This resolution is necessary to prevent tragedies like that of Linda Short. Linda Short was a 73-year-old visitor, visitor to Broward County, who was hit and killed by a Brightline train. Ms. Short was a mother of two, a grandparent of five, when she tragically passed away. In another case, Jeffrey King, his mother still cries every time she hears a train go by. In the article Treasure Coast News on January 26, 2018, Brightline was quoted as saying, "Safety is Brightline's highest priority." All this resolution does is reiterate this stance. This is critical, as the deaths of the Florida East Coast Railroad, including Brightline Rail, shows that Florida's rail are objectively and disproportionately unsafe. In 2017 alone, FEC had 16 fatalities on merely 351 miles of track. In contrast, Indiana, Ohio, which has 548 miles of track, has yet to have a single fatality. According to the Miami News, Florida is the second deadliest state, next to California. In the last two, in the last two Brightline deaths, according to November 2018 Sun Sentinel article, the tragedies were directly related to the speed of the train. Some other deaths can be explained away as suicide, but this is misleading. Other railroads have specifically taken steps to prevent suicides on their railroads by, by putting up items such as quad gates. Instead of going down this path, Brightline has fought lawsuits that demanded these type of improvements. So, that's the rationale for the train. Resolution 19, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard, Florida, in support of Florida Senator Debbie Mayfield's effort to ensure the safety of all passenger rail systems in Florida by encouraging the governor and the Florida Department of Transportation to fulfill the recommendations with the Office of Public Policy and Government Accountability Regarding Passenger Rail. I'll skip over the whereas, and as, as I think I've outlined, most of unfortunate tragedies that have taken place. But, so, now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners fully support, again, Florida Senator Debbie Mayfield's request, the Florida Department of Transportation immediately accept the findings of the OPAGA study and develop regulations governing high-speed passenger rails. The Brevard County Board of County Commissioners encourages Governor DeSantis to address the high number of deaths on all forms of rail systems in Florida, and direct the Florida Department of Transportation to plan, to make plans for reducing these numbers, death, accidents, and derailments. Never mind, I probably should strike that, derailments. As, as Florida rail system is one of the most dangerous in the country, and, three, the Florida County, the, the Brevard County Board of County Commissioner encourages Governor DeSantis to direct Florida Department of Transportation to consider an alternative route for high-speed trail, passenger rail, where reducing population density and much fewer at grade crossings will save the lives, the likelihood of tax dollars of all Florida residents. And as a side, I would like to thank Senator Debbie Mayfield for her continued work to look out for the safety of all residents of Brevard County, and as she continues to push for safer transportation systems. That is the resolution, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Loeb.
I just have a few comments and questions with respect to the items that were just now changed, as identified in kind of an orangey-red color on the, the handouts. One is addressing Ms. Short. In my brief, very, very brief research, I noticed that, at least the news story that I was able to come up with here indicates that that individual turned onto the tracks and was hit by a train. And then, with respect to the other individual, it appears that they had their car physically on the tracks, not that anything was done incorrectly by the, the train or by the utility. I think it was mentioned earlier this evening that one way to stop drunks would be to prohibit driving at night. Again, anytime you have any form of, of mass transportation, you're going to have fatalities. It doesn't make it okay, it doesn't make it nice, but we could stop all road fatalities if we stopped all road traffic. It just doesn't make it a reasonable thing to do. If there were more evidence with respect to failings on the part of the utility, or on part of the, the operator, I could see putting this restriction in place, but from what I can tell, and my understanding with respect to Brevard County, is we have essentially sealed crossings, or we will have, I'm sorry, sealed crossings, once all of the construction's complete, such that instead of having two arms that someone can do an S-turnaround, we'll have four arms that drop down, prohibiting someone from getting onto the tracks after they've lowered. I believe that may have been a request from Mr. Denninghoff. I don't know if that's, is that correct, Mr. Denninghoff?
We've essentially asked for that. We've not seen plans that indicate that at this point.
Is there not, my understanding, as well as there's a, a commitment to spend, I believe, half a million over and above what otherwise is being done to ensure that that's put in place. Is that not accurate?
I'm not confident about that. I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll defer to, to Mr. Roberts later on. But, again, it, it comes down to a question of, have they done something wrong, and if so, what measures are being taken here, if any, to prevent that from happening here? And again, if you want to address it, you know, by all means, but that's just my understanding, a very, very brief amount of, of time researching the issue.
Yeah, I appreciate it. However, and I'll mention this again. In Florida, we have 351 miles of track. There have been 16 fatalities. In Indiana, Ohio, there are 548 miles of track. There have been zero fatalities. That is statistically significant. So, whether it's the, you know, there's probably many factors that go into it. However, when you have, you can't even mathematically figure that out, one's a zero. So, I mean, it, I could say by a factor of, it would be more than 16, because obviously, they have more track, but either way, it's an infinitesimal analogy, as, as, as one has, again, more tracks, zero deaths, we have less tracks, and 16 fatalities. So, whether someone accidentally made a turn, that may account for one. A suicide may account for one, but, again, 16 to zero, I think there are many other factors that go into this. Safety certainly is very important, as is supporting, I believe, Senator Mayfield's push to make this safe. And I think that's probably the impetus, probably behind, as Virgin Rail, as they've quoted, that safety is, is, is very important. That's all, that's all this resolution does.
You go ahead.
With respect to that, I have no problem passing a resolution that says that we, we encourage best operating practices in, in order to further safety, but this goes a step beyond that. And in terms of Ms. Short, the only reason I brought her up as an example is because this was, was something that was added, that was just brought to my attention in your resolution, or your proposed resolution here. I understand where you're coming from with respect to, was it Ohio was the other state you mentioned?
Indiana, no.
Indiana. But, again, I, I don't know that we can say that, that the correlation indicates there's some causation element there. And whether it's, it's 16, or 20, or 15, anything over zero is horribly unfortunate, but I, I just don't see that being tied into being the operator's fault, solely on the basis of how many incidents have occurred. If there's something to show that they've done something incorrect, by all means, I'd be much more receptive to, to being less than welcoming to them, but I just haven't seen that to this point. And I'm not, you know, I certainly, I don't own stock in the company by any means to plan on buying stock. I don't even know that it's publicly traded. But, however that may be...
So, would, Madam Chair, with your indulgence?
Go ahead.
Would you be okay? What happens if I struck through the addition? So, we, would you feel more comfortable if we got rid of the two deaths of the, and that was probably wrong of me, in all honesty, to put only two of them down? I probably should've listed them all, but, so I shouldn't have singled any out. So, if I was to take away the two whereas clauses, where, again, we got rid of the tragic loss of a 73-year-old who had two children, and five grandchildren, and we got rid of the other one who, whose mother, every time she hears a train, she cries. If we got rid of those two whereas clauses, would you feel more comfortable supporting it?
Would I feel more comfortable, or would I feel comfortable?
Or would you feel comfortable supporting it?
It depends on what we hear in public comment. What I can say, though, is, is with respect to their inclusion, again, it's not that I'm unempathetic toward what happened to those folks. I just think that the manner in which it's included suggests that that's somehow attributable to the train operator. I don't know that that's the case. So, you know, there are horribly tragic things that take place, but it doesn't mean that the, that DOT, for instance, is, is responsible for that, if it's something that occurs on a highway. I would feel better about it, but I don't want you to weaken your resolution if it's something that I end up not supporting in the end anyway. And quite frankly, I don't know whether I'm gonna support it until I hear public comment on this. This is one where I've not made my mind up at this point. So, my suggestion is to hold off on weakening it, because if I'm not gonna support it anyway, you might as well pass it with the strongest language possible.
Mr. Roberts? And I didn't see Susan here.
She, she.
Did she? And after Rusty, we have Adrienne. Is that you? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the commission. I appreciate this very much. Sorry for the late hour, so I'll try and truncate, truncate my remarks.
Can you give us your name and address, please?
Sorry, yes. Rusty Roberts, Virgin Trains USA 10705, Jeff Fuqua Boulevard, Orlando. That's our office address. I want to start off by saying that, first, I agree with Commissioner Tobias, that, that safety should be a first priority, and I can assure him and this commission that safety's mission one for the Brightline Virgin Trains project. We just officially changed our name last week, so we're still getting used to the new tongue twister. And I just want to say that, as we developed the project, we worked closely with both the Federal Railroad Administration and Florida DOT to design the highway crossings to the highest standards of safety that are required by the Federal Railroad Administration. The FDOT and FRA worked hand-in-hand with us, working with representatives from every county and every municipality, including Mr. Denninghoff, when we were here in Brevard County on a crossing-by-crossing diagnostic, diagnostic review to, to determine what is the best safety measures to put at each, at each crossing. And by that, I mean, we had standards that were set by Federal Railroad Administration, which FDOT required us to adhere to, which they have authority to do so. And then, we, we worked with local public directors and city and county engineers in the comment area to figure out what more we, we could do. So, we would not object to any resolution that talks about safety and urges this company to operate in the high, with the highest safety standards. We would also want the, a resolution to applaud this company for doing an innovative thing, bringing a public benefit to the state in terms of public transportation. The resolution admits many positive recommendation, recommendations from the OPAGA report. And by that, I mean the resolution was very one-sided. It, it ignores areas of community partnerships, suicide prevention, grade enforcement of traffic laws, funding of state-of-the-art safety equipment. And it incorrectly asserts, most glaringly, that Brevard County residents, through their tax dollars, will pay for reconstruction of grade crossings. No government entity has received a bill from us for any grade crossing reconstruction, and Brevard County will receive no bills from us for any crossing upgrades. And in fact, this company agreed to pay for the maintenance of these crossings for the next eight years. The resolution calls for the governor to find an alternative route. This project is on largely private railroad property that exists today. If it were possible to move out of the urban area of Brevard County, it would greatly increase our cross, cost, make the project infeasible, and, you know, that ship has sailed. We are starting construction in the next 45 days on this project, ladies and gentlemen. We are, funding is in place, and we are ready to move forward with this project. So, I appreciate the good intentions of the sponsor, but we would ask that you defer action, and allow us the opportunity to work with you to build a resolution that is forward-looking, that expresses our shared desire for safety, but also will allow this county to be served with a train station, which we're already in the pre-development phase.
Okay. Do you have a question for him?
Just very briefly. With respect to the, the actual text of what was proposed, are there any other areas that you believe are factually inaccurate, or, or very misleading to the extent that they might as well be factually inaccurate?
Well, certainly, what I mentioned about the, the grade crossing is, we've stated countless times that we are not billing anybody for the work, no taxpayers having any costs cited, you know, from us for, for the crossings. You know, with regard to the derailment issue, look, I, that whole section was about the freight company, and it's an entirely different company. The derailment that he talked about, we've had, that freight company's had one in 10 years. The others are what they call rail yard incidents, which are always very, very minor.
What does that mean?
Well, rail cars are towed through rail yards, being pushed and pulled, and sometimes a wheel will ride up, because there's switches everywhere while they move tracks around. It rides up a track, off the track a little bit. That's a derailment. It doesn't tip over, there's no danger, it's just they put it back down. Look, what, also, the resolution fails to mention is the fact that suicide is a major problem, and in, suicide by train. And I think that when you talk about 16 deaths here, we've had 80% of the incidents on our railroad, the fatalities have been by suicide. We've had one or two, I believe two, you mentioned one, where somebody was in a car and, and struck because they were on the tracks, either turned accidentally onto the track instead of the road, or got caught on the track. With regard to quad gates...
Thank you.
We are, we are installing quad gates. By the way, Mr. Denninghoff will be receiving a, a new set of plans by the end of April, because I know he's expecting them. We've had meetings with him, addressing his comments. Everywhere that this train is going exceeding 79 miles per hour, there will be quad gates. In certain areas where we're not exceeding 79 miles, we will also have quad gates. And that's in particularly, essentially, areas that are, we have to be careful, like downtown Melbourne, for instance, going through Melbourne, and, and those kinds of areas. So, my overall point is that we're not afraid to talk about safety, but we think, we think we need to be truthful about it. That, it was mentioned early on another item, that, that this is the highest state for pedestrian deaths. So, when you talk about Indiana, Ohio, you're talking about a very rural area, and you're talking about a freight company, not about a, a passenger train. When you talk about pedestrian deaths, last year, Brevard County had 22 in one county. And, and, and we are operating in three counties, and so, when you want to talk about statistics, I think you need to put things in perspective. We have taken a lot of lessons learned from our operation in South Florida, and we're actually adding additional safety measures in South Florida to find a way to reduce those kinds of deaths. That OPAGA report stated that most of the deaths, suicide in other areas, are quote, "outside of the railroad's control." And it's because of human error, or trespassing, or suicide. There's been zero deaths, zero incidents, where it have been caused by a malfunction of our gate system, signaling system, or the trains.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
All right. Anybody else? Adrienne Cronbaw?
In the Senate, they have limits on meetings. You guys are troopers here. My name's Adrienne Cronbaw. I'm with Senator Debbie Mayfield's office. We're at 900 East Strawbridge Avenue in Melbourne. And she couldn't be here this evening. She is in Tallahassee for legislative session, and working on this very issue. She wanted to thank you for reviewing the Florida Passenger Rail System Study that was conducted by the Office of Public Policy and Government Accountability that was released this past fall. And she's still working to get FDOT to address gaps in federal and state regulations governing this higher-speed rail. Again, this is higher speed. This isn't what we've experienced in this area before. And she really wants to thank you all for your support and commitment to the safety of our residents and visitors. And again, that study, if you haven't seen it, it was a little long. It does, what we really are focused on is getting FDOT to address those gaps in federal and state regulations regarding... and state regulations regarding higher-speed rail.
Any questions? No. Thank you. All right. Do we need to modify that? Maybe I'll ask staff verify. Are they paying for the upgrades and the maintenance for eight years?
That's my recollection. After eight years, then the maintenance expenses would return to the typical, which is that we pay for it.
Okay.
So, yes, Madam Chair, yeah, I, from another government office, that's where I received that one. So, and I'd be more than willing to, I'll be more than willing to, so I'll tell you what.
And I'm happy to support this 100%, but I just want to be sure it's accurate.
Absolutely, absolutely. So let's get rid of the two, whether Commissioner Loeb supports it or not. Let's get rid of the two whereas, sorry, the three whereas's, the orange whereas's. Also, let's get rid of whereas the residents of Brevard County. So I'd make a motion to approve the resolution with those three deletions, or those four deletions.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Tobia. Do you have a second? I'll second. Commissioner Pritchett?
I was going to just ask for a couple more changes.
Sure.
Because it's just real lengthy again. But, okay, so I like paragraph one, two, and paragraph three's, okay, two. I think paragraph four and five also is good. Maybe we could, oh, six is okay. I think seven maybe could get next a little bit.
One thing is, it's talking about freight, and this isn't freight.
Yeah, it was, yeah. And, you know, just give it...
So the whereas, the CPM, I'm sorry, I don't remember.
Yes, sir, you're very, the very last, yeah, the very last paragraph.
Okay, so we talk about, that's the one that reads, let me get this straight, 536 accidents, correct?
Yeah.
And 143 total fatalities, that one?
And all of that's there, I get it, but we're trying to support something.
No, it's fine, it's fine. I just want to make sure I have the right one.
And then on page two, I think then we could probably just drop right to therefore now be resolved, and we're going to go ahead and support Senator Debbie Mayfield's coming down with the number one, number two, and number three are probably fine, too.
Okay, I'm sorry. So let's just go by the one where we talk about All Aboard Florida has experienced 17 deaths in only 20 months. Did you want to get rid of?
Well, not that you so much, but this, but see, you've got factual things here of just what's going on, and then it's, I know it's all about Florida, but it's not just all about, all about Florida, it's about high-speed rail.
Well, yeah.
So then if we just start supporting Debbie Mayfield's after that, which she's covering a lot of it.
But, yeah, and I understand, but All Aboard Florida is now virgin, so, I mean, it's like a name change, sort of like when Marlboro got in trouble and changed their name to Altria, you know? So you'd feel more comfortable if we got rid of the fact that All Aboard Florida has experienced 17 deaths?
I just don't think it has to go in this resolution to move forward.
Okay, that's fine. I think it's probably on the record. And then you want to get rid...
No, sir, don't ever put in my mouth that I'm not comfortable with there being 17 deaths. That's not what I said.
I'm not insinuating, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I...
You said it's on the record, so...
But, yeah, I didn't put it on the record. This is factual, yeah, factual. So we'll get rid of everything else down there?
I think you can shorten the resolution, make it still do what you want to do by doing paragraphs one through six on the front, and then dropping down where we are supporting Debbie Mayfield's agenda at the Senate level.
Yeah, but which one? Let me just, so it starts as whereas Debbie Mayfield has been resolute in protecting the health, safety, and welfare? Can we leave that?
I think what it says, you could, but you could just drop down to would therefore be resolved that we're supporting her, Senator Debbie Mayfield's resolution coming down.
Can I have just a minute to reread this with the changes?
Yeah.
Thanks.
I'm in support of maximizing safety for our citizens, I really am. And we're going to have to make some changes and adjustments. I love what Ms. Mayfield's doing up there. I was really concerned to find out that there wasn't, let me get this, you said this last time you were here, ma'am, and it got my attention, that there isn't a mandate on oversight of passenger rail at all right now. And that concerns me greatly. And so I love that it's in here in number five, so I appreciate so much that we're working on this right now.
So just for clarity's sake, Commissioner Pritchett, we're leaving the first six paragraphs?
If you agree to that, sir.
Yeah, I'd like your buy-in here. Then we're getting rid of everything up to the whereas the Brevard County Commission wishes to express its full support and center for mail for its hard work running unsafe conditions in the county. And so it's just that one block, that huge block that's got removed?
Yeah, and I think you've got it all covered.
That's an easy deletion. So I would change my motion to accept the resolution with those one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine whereas's. Is that correct? Is that the number? You count it? Just want to make sure.
Yes, sir. Thank you, sir, you're amazing.
Thank you for working with me.
It's okay, he's so kind.
Commissioner Loeb?
I'm trying to find a way to get on board with you all, forgive the pun. Would you consider...
Don't be a virgin.
Okay, I'll try. Would you consider striking the third, which appears to be the last item following now therefore be it resolved?
No.
Okay. Doesn't hurt to ask.
All right, so I guess I'll modify my second. I would have liked to have seen less stricken, but I'll modify.
You're no longer, you're modifying your second, so you're still...
I'm modifying my second to, still second your motion, if that makes sense.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes for one. We do have an interesting board, I have to say. Okay.
Hey, I'm sorry you had to sit through this.
All right, item K, public comment. Of course, you know you have the right to say whatever you want, but I would just encourage you to try to keep it.
Oh, yeah, I'm not addressing Commissioner Loeb. I'm going, I forgot to fill out a card for the...
For the train, for the Debbie Mayfield thing?
No, for the golf carts.
You can speak on that if you want.
Yeah, I was just going to say, sorry.
Name and address, I know it's tired, it's late.
Robert Burns here, Viera. And I drive that bridge every day. I live with golf carts in my neighborhood, picking my kids up from Manatee. My daughter's almost been hit by a golf cart, I've been almost hit by a golf cart. I understand they become something that we live with up here in Viera, but my first and foremost concern is always safety. And no matter how responsible or good that 14-year-old kid may be driving that cart, that cart's not designed for an irresponsible adult who's driving a vehicle that hits it. And that, almost 100% of the time, that's going to be a fatality of children. And more often than not, those kids aren't driving by themselves. Like you said, there's a gang of them, you know, on there. There's no seat belts most of the time, and I don't think it's a risk to risk the lives of those children for the convenience. And I understand the frustration, but I'd be much more frustrated with losing, you know, a life of a kid because of, not because of their responsibility, but because of a driver who has airbags and seat belts. That's all.
Thank you. All right. Board of Ports, Mr. Bate.
I do have one item, and that relates to a report that the board received from our solid waste management department on US 192, the future landfill site project. We gave you a rather detailed history report, nine pages, talking about the current status of that in light of the fact that we did receive, staff received, a draft permit from the Army Corps of Engineers relative to that site on March 15th. Prior to that, back on February 21st, staff had met with the City of Melbourne, because, as you know from a prior report that we sent you a few weeks ago about the Sarno landfill site and its current status, there we need to be seeking a variance with the city for additional height variance for the landfill site at Sarno. Staff did receive an application from our engineers, outside engineering consultant, for that particular variance that, we received that on April 2nd, and staff is preparing to submit the application to the City of Melbourne, and we anticipate that they will consider that during May, and hopefully we will get that variance, so that will give us some very much-needed extended life at the Sarno facility. However, the purpose for me raising this issue with you now is because the Army Corps draft permit is one that we had 30 days to provide comments, so we wanted to make sure we got this information to the board, so you were aware of it. After that, then we cannot, we can no longer make any additional comments in case we had any questions about it or concerns. In fact, staff and our outside consultants have looked at that draft permit. They do not anticipate, unless we get different direction from the board, making any comments. And at that point, it's a matter of executing the permit, and we have not done that. We wanted to make sure that we got all this information to the board, and my purpose this evening is to see in light of that information whether or not there was an interest from the board in either us putting an agenda together for this item, or having a workshop on this item, or if the board wanted to give us any other direction before proceeding. Otherwise, staff is ready to proceed, but we wanted to make sure that we got all this information to the board before moving any further.
Seeing as there's no lights on, and this is my district, I spoke with, I'll just tell the commission, I spoke with the county manager, and obviously, this is an issue that's very near and dear, and I feel very passionate about. There is no harm, nor is there any urgency to get the, to sign the permit, and the county manager has agreed that waiting until after our June break to come back for an agendized item before we move forward, because there are several options that we can look at that don't involve us trucking the trash out to Osceola, nor do they involve us doing anything major, or, a couple of months isn't going to make a big difference, and I want some more time, because we haven't done the environmental study on the other possible piece of land that's available. We have 68 acres, some of which is being used by St. John's, some of it's retention, but that's all zoned landfill. That's a possibility. So there's a lot of options out there that aren't just, let's start a new landfill at 192. So I want this commission to be very careful before moving forward, before signing that permit and rezoning that land, just so we can say it's more valuable, or, you know, I think it's a very dangerous prospect, and, you know, I may not have the votes, I may end up with the votes, I'm not sure, but I'm going to fight it right to the bitter end. And I think at least, we always defer to the commissioner of the district, we always defer, and I can go back and look at the minutes, and every commissioner up here does it. And this is such a big deal to me and my district, and such, it should be a big deal to everybody, considering that this will be the first thing that you see when you drive down 192. And you may not see it in the beginning, but we all know how high that heap becomes, and I don't want to be known as, as, you know, giving directions to, oh, by the way, we're just, we're just west of the dump. You know, you'll know you're in Brevard County when you hit the dump coming east on 192. So that's, again, I feel very passionately about this, and I think there's a lot of people that want to weigh in, and I think before we pull the trigger and decide that we want to be in the business of constructing another landfill, I think we need to know what our options are and to know that we're making the best decision. Obviously, you know where I stand, and I think that, you know, I think at the very least that this board owes me that, to have the opportunity to try to find a better way and a more permanent solution, rather than the easy one, 3,000 acres in the middle of Deseret Ranch. Think about the potential for environmental impacts, think about, you know, we talked about wetland mitigation, about how we can't duplicate wetlands, yet that's what we're proposed to do in the future at that site. We may not do it during the first cell phase. So, I mean, there's a lot of things, and I looked at some of the old minutes, and I've gone through the old workshop, and I've looked at, you know, statements made by staff versus what reality is today, and what reality was five years from those statements. And I want to make sure that the public is aware, I want to have a chance, considering how close we are in proximity to St. John's, to the environmental risks that are involved. And, you know, we never thought we would be where we are with the lagoon today. I don't want us to be making big regrets later, saying, oh, it was just some minor leakage, oh, we just had a puncture in our liner, oh, we just, you know, and I know that there's, there's things in place to possibly prevent some of that stuff, but I think any risk is not a good risk. And I think impacting such a large parcel of land out there and identifying us with that landfill is a bad idea. So I think at the very least, we owe it to the rest of our county and to our residents and to District Five to at least look at all possible solutions. Because we don't have the answers yet. We don't have the environmental study on that parcel that's next to Sarno. We don't have the evaluation, at least a comprehensive evaluation, on what, if any of that 68 acres that we purchased, was it back in 1990, or maybe '91 or '89, around there? I mean, we don't have a full evaluation on that yet, because that's what we purchased that for. Now we're using it for stormwater mitigation, and St. John's is using it for some dredging material. So, I mean, there may be a piece there that we can use, but, and I believe, I've spoken with a few Melbourne City Council people, and they're amicable to the height, the height variance, so I didn't mean to rant on, obviously, this issue's very important to me, and I would hate to see us make a bad decision. So I want to make a motion that we, and I'll pass the gavel, and make that motion that we hold off on signing that permit, and we bring it back to the first meeting in July after the break.
I'll second it.
Okay, so I have a motion, or, you have to say it, yeah, there's a motion by me, right?
All right, motion by our chair.
Oh, he's not allowed to second it. I second it.
He can second, as a chair. You can second as a chair.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I didn't know that either, too.
Just can't move.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion?
I do have a couple things. Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner Tobia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This question is for staff. Can you tell, can you, what is the, what is the implication, should we wait till June to sign that permit? What is...
Before staff answers that, just so I don't get in trouble serving as chair for the moment, we're coming up on 11:00. So if we could perhaps have a motion to permit us to continue going on beyond 11:00?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, with respect to that motion, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, wonderful. Okay, I apologize.
So what's harm in waiting till June as opposed to giving authorization for the county manager to sign it immediately?
I don't think a couple of months is going to make that much difference. There's mainly because there's still permits to be obtained. The Army Corps of Engineers is just, is the last big permit. There's still DOT permits and all that stuff that has to be obtained. Not only that, but to be fair to the other options, there's still outstanding questions that have to be answered, like we have an appraisal that is being conducted on the m... that have to be answered, like we have an appraisal that is being conducted on the Melbourne landfill that we do not have the report yet. We also don't have the, even though it does look like there shouldn't be much of an issue, we don't have the answer on the variance for the height. I think those, that kind of information would make the board's decision a lot better. I don't know if the board wants an agenda item, or would prefer a much freer discussion in a workshop environment, but that's up to the board.
Follow-up, is there any cost in moving forward at this point? The question by the county manager was to give authorization to accept the, or move forward with the Army Corps Engineers permit. Was that not the?
That's not what he said, but.
Sorry.
No, sorry, Frank, go ahead. The Army Corps of Engineer permit, I'm authorized to sign, I have not done it yet. There is no cost in that, because all the cost has been, we have spent the money to obtain it, and we have the permit in front of us. There is no additional cost or monetary value in that permit. The only one that we're waiting on for money is a check from county finance in order to submit the variance for the city of Melbourne, but we were going to do that anyway. So for that purpose, no, there's no additional cost.
I appreciate there's a motion and a second. I'm on the other side of this argument, and let me explain why. First of all, I want to defuse the deference to the, it's ridiculous to make the reference that for zoning issues, we're comparing issues that are county-wide. Solid waste is something that is, is not just in District 5, it's not just in District 3. It's not like a height restriction on a hotel in Titusville. What we do with our solid waste affects each and every one of our districts. So while I many times defer to zoning issues, there's absolutely no way that I would be deferring to a commissioner based on they don't want a landfill in their district. I don't see any harm, as you mentioned, for moving forward with this. I think the end result is the same with Commissioner Isnardi and myself. I do not want to see a dump there. I think that this board has made some good steps. We're currently working on RFP out there for alternative technologies. We don't know what will come of that, but I think it would be short-sighted of us not to move forward. My understanding is, we have millions of dollars, help me in the neighborhood of $25 million sunk in this project, is that?
It's over 24 invested, I believe, between the property.
24.9 right now, so.
What's $100,000 between friends? $25 million. I'd like to, I think it'd be foolish of us now with no cost not to get the best return on that. The permit, is it fair to say that if this permit was signed off on or authorized, that would increase the value of that land? Is that a fair, is that a fair assessment?
My guess, yes, because this is the permit that has cost the most amount of time to be able to obtain.
Let me ask you this question. Is there any way it would decrease the cost?
No, sir, because you don't have to pay attention to the permit.
Okay. So seeing as this is a county asset, going forward with this permit does not cost county taxpayers any money. In fact, in the long run, we may see a huge benefit from it, whether it is used as a landfill or not. I respectfully will be voting against this, and if this one goes down, I certainly would have a motion that we go forward with this permit, not spend dollar one on that project, but certainly increase the value to the taxpayers and give us another option should other options go, go to the wayside for one reason or another. So again, for that reason, I will not be supporting the motion on the table and making another one if this one should not get through.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Thank you. I don't have any problem, just waiting a couple of months to come back with it. With all that being said, I know it does affect the county, but it's going to affect Commissioner Isnardi more than the rest of us, she's going to have more weight on this when we start doing conversations. It is a lot of money we've invested, we have to figure out how to be good stewards of that, and we're going to have to, I'm hoping we come back with some kind of alternative. I don't want to start spreading our footprints in other places if we don't have to. I really am hoping we can do something with the Sarno Road, in that you'll have some creative ideas, or we can get through figuring out what kind of hurdles we might have with that other property that's for sale there. I really am looking forward to starting to do some more recycling on the construction and some of those other things. I know, and you know what, maybe there's another piece of land somewhere, you know, that we, I don't know, but just some ideas. I hear you, Commissioner Isnardi, this is the last thing I want to do. We're going to have to hold on to it in case we have no other efforts, but I'm hoping that we are able to come up with an idea, that's what I'm hoping. So I'm completely on board with waiting a couple of months and getting some more ideas and maybe some alternatives together.
I would hit my light if I had one.
Okay.
I just want to say, you know, as far as talking about it being in my district, it obviously impacts my district the most, you know, and I think solid waste, I think we need to be responsible. We have 24, over 24 million invested, because we spent millions in litigation. Let's not forget how we acquired this property. It was, it was sold by Deseret Ranch, because we pursued it through eminent domain, and we sued them for years and years. First, we applied for a permit, if I'm not mistaken, we applied for a permit before we even had the land. So we withdrew it and then got the land and then resubmitted it, if I remember correctly. Waiting a few months to sign that permit, the county's not going to lose any money, but once we sign it, all it does, sure, you say you don't, you don't want a landfill there either, but now, once it's zoned landfill, I mean, at that point, I mean, logic would say, I mean, the Deseret Ranch folks aren't going to pay $25 million for a piece of ranch land, and there's, and there's such a thing as not using it for its intended take. So I don't, I mean, that's a lot of legal questions, and that I wouldn't even put Ms. Bentley through without knowing where this board sits, but I think just because we can doesn't mean we should. And I think it's bad enough that we took that land under the untrue, whether well-intended or not, argument that the Sarno landfill was going to fill a long time ago, we were able to extend it this long. We took that land, and so now we're going to devalue the land for those folks out there because we don't care, because they're going to develop it anyway. Well, guess what? I mean, would you want to develop next to a landfill? I know I don't want people driving into our county and that being the first thing they see when they come here from Disneyland. That doesn't sound like a very appealing thing. And I know we're going to do, you know, Class 3 first, but it's a bad idea all around. I think we, we should look for every alternative but this. Again, this has become a legacy issue, and this has become more of a pursuit on behalf of the county, whether it be commissioner, staff, it's become more of a pursuit of, okay, now we're doing it, so let's just keep moving forward, instead of looking for the best possible alternative. We should always look for another alternative. We should not have commission offices calling congressman offices trying to get permits expedited. That is wrong. That should never happen unless it comes from this board. And I appreciate the county manager holding off on allowing, or I should say, moving forward with having this signed, out of respect for not just District 5, but out of respect for bringing this back to the board to decide how we move forward. I hope that the board will support, or at least the majority of us will support, holding off on signing that a couple of months, because nothing is lost by doing that. Even if, you know, it's decided later on that we're going to go ahead and, and we're going to go ahead and sign that because the majority of the board decides to, it's not going to make a difference if it's just a couple of months, in my opinion. I mean, of course, I care about what happens at Sarno landfill, but that's already a landfill. I mean, we're, we already, we already have a landfill there, why would we want to create another one? It just doesn't make any logical sense to me. And I appreciate, Ms. Pritchett, I appreciate you, you know, at least being open to look at other options and being sympathetic to, and I don't want this in anybody else's district either. I mean, I want us to do something different. I want us to utilize Sarno to the best of our possible ability, take the land, that zoned landfill there, and see what we can do with it. I think that that's our first, that should be what we look at first.
Oh, I see another light, okay. Commissioner Smith.
I agree. I have no problem looking at alternatives and looking at our options. I think that's what we're here to do. I think that's our purpose. I'm always open to options, and I think one of the options that we need to look at at the same time is, we don't have a crystal ball. We don't know what this county is going to need in the way of a landfill in 25 years. So to consider selling this now takes away that option from the commission that will be sitting at that point in time, because they'll have the answers. Right now, all we can do is speculate what the conditions are going to be in 25 years. But we, this is a valuable asset, and I don't think that we should consider selling it, but I think absolutely we should look at every option before we have to use it. So I'll support your, your motion, because as you said, in two or three months, it's not going to make any difference when we sign it.
Any other comment before I jump in? Okay. Well, I thought this was going to go 3-2, but it looks like it may be 4-1 in this case. A question for staff, and then a couple of thoughts. With respect to the money that was spent, I don't anticipate by any means we'll recover 24 or 25 million were we to sell the land back to Deseret. But presumably, we were to cover some of that money were we to sell the money, were we to sell the property back? I mean, that's, that's a reasonable assumption, wouldn't you say?
I don't think we're really in a position to say, but I would say, if you have that permit, that the opportunity that the highest best use in the terms of the value of the property would be enhanced, most likely, but, you know, you know, I'm not an expert to be able to give you that response definitively.
Okay. Now, I'll address something that was mentioned by Yuri, with respect to Melbourne's appetite to consider this. It's interesting, because oftentimes with Sunshine, I think a lot of us are working on the same item and just don't know it. This is one of those instances. I've not talked with all seven of the folks that serve on that council, but I have spoken with more than one of them, including Paul Alfry, in whose district the Sarno facility is located, with respect to the appetite for a variance. And he certainly appeared inclined to consider a variance. Now, I don't know whether he would be amenable to going to 104 feet, as what was suggested, but certainly, there may be some room up to that point, maybe less, maybe all the way, that he would certainly consider. And then their vice mayor certainly did not express any sort of overt opposition to the concept. Granted, she didn't give me the level of certainty that I felt from Councilman Alfry. Again, keeping in mind that he didn't agree to 104 feet, as I believe the proposal is at this point. Now, I think the important thing to keep in mind is, having options is good, but my concern is if we take that step and sign that doc, and we end up with something that now we can use for a landfill, I don't want that to then be transferred to another property owner if we sell that property, with them now having the ability to turn it into a landfill. That's my concern with doing it. And I'm not saying that, that I'm willing to write off the difference in value at this point. I think Deseret is certainly well-aware that if we want to turn this into a landfill, we can do that, and even if it doesn't have the signature on the sheet of paper, that may factor into what they're willing to pay. I'm not saying give the property back to them, or sell it to them at a discount, but if we do end up selling it, and I'm saying if, because I don't know whether we will or not, it just depends on what's reasonable and what the options are. There's no reason we can't point out to them, although it's already abundantly clear, if we want to turn this into a landfill, we can turn this into a landfill, therefore, it's worth more than ordinarily would be worth, even though the zoning, as it's currently structured, may not show that. So with that, unless there are any more comments, I'll go ahead and bring it to vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, passes 4-1 with Commissioner Tobias opposed.
Just so I understand in that motion, because I didn't hear it one way or the other, are we going to bring back in July?
July, the first meeting, an agenda item.
An agenda item.
I like workshops, but I've been to enough workshops, and I was at your workshop in 2016, and I saw how the dynamic was, and I, I'd much rather it be very much in the public view and in a public venue, and give people the opportunity, because people don't go to workshops. They just don't, they don't sit in a workshop all day long, and it's, it is more staff-driven and staff-ran, when I want this to be, I want to hear from everybody, not just staff. So I prefer it to be an agenda item. Just don't put a lot on that agenda. If it needs to come to the second meeting.
Yeah, that's when we're doing the board, you know, the tentative budget. I'm not sure exactly which, you know, I've got to look at the dates, but not until the middle of July. So you said the first early meeting in July, the first night meeting?
Maybe just try to keep the agenda light if you can.
Yeah. Well, you know, the problem with that is we're just coming back off the one month.
Well, it can't be any worse than this, right? As far as time goes.
I'm just telling you, it may be difficult to make it a light agenda, because we would not have met during the month of June.
Yeah.
But we'll do the best we can, of course.
Okay. And also, part of that motion was to not sign that, that permit. I said that in my motion.
I understood that, ma'am.
Well, I was telling Frank, I wasn't sure if Frank got that, because he was asking to clarify.
Yeah, we, we fully understand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks for the support, guys. All right. Ms. Bentley?
No report.
Ms. Pritchett?
Just one thing, I wanted to give you guys, the community that was here the other night for the zoning, I've got a few responses, and one of them that really blessed my heart was some of them said they haven't liked government a long time, and after watching the board, the way we're respectful, that they said they have their faith renewed in local government. So I just wanted to pass that along to y'all.
They're so nice. Mr. Loeb?
I've got a couple of things, one easy and one a little more difficult. So the non-contemptious item, my wife and I were out, I believe it was this past Sunday, at the Peelock Dog Park in Vice Mayor Debbie Thomas's portion of Melbourne, helping Councilman Alfry build that. We were out there for probably about five and a quarter hours, and just, I got incinerated out there, mostly the legs. I would encourage anyone who's willing to go out there, to please look at going out there. I know that he's allowing folks to come out during the evening, and he's encouraging folks to come out during the evening, not 11 o'clock at night by any means, like now, but in the early evening to work on that. They're trying to get a grand opening for that in the upcoming days, and they're really tight with respect to the schedule, hence the reason that I was out there for longer than I otherwise would have been, to try to help them keep that schedule they have. So anyone that wants to go out there and has some time, please do get in touch with Councilman Alfry and see what you can do to help him, even if it's only for a couple hours. Now, the fun, more contentious item that's going to involve a motion, I have some language that was forwarded to me indirectly by staff, based on discussions that our sheriff has had with staff. I'm just going to go ahead and essentially read that, along with a couple of minor modifications I'm making to be comfortable with it. And I don't want, before I make the motion, I don't want anyone to presume that this means that I'm in favor of increasing taxes, or that I will eventually, this is just giving us additional options. So the motion is as follows. Based upon the unfunded critical needs that have been identified by the sheriff, I'm moving to authorize the county manager to prepare in his tentative budget proposal for fiscal year 19 to 20, multiple options for ad valorem tax rates, including an option that may exceed the aggregate rolled-back rate in order to provide funding for the critical needs identified by the sheriff while maintaining existing service levels elsewhere, as well as an option that may reduce service levels within the aggregate rolled-back rate while still maintaining the most urgent critical needs identified by the sheriff. And again, with that, I'm not agreeing to do that as a finality, but I do want the options available. So that's my motion.
Second for discussion.
Have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett.
Commissioner Loeb, I think that's appropriate. We did ask him to try to stay within aggregate, but again, we don't have all the numbers in, so I think we need to allow him the flexibility to come back with some things. And I'm guessing this has a lot to do with the sheriff needing a larger budget. So I agree with you on that, because I know it's going to be in his MSTU, and it's his budget, and ergo, I don't think we need to have the rest of the county suffering in that. So we're going to have to have our manager come back with some options. It's going to be a different kind of year, but, you know, it's the day we're living in right now, so.
Commissioner Tobias?
I just want to verify with staff, this isn't a bad late April fool's joke. I just want to verify with staff, this isn't a bad late April Fool's joke that we're playing on the new guy? I'm guessing that's not. And just to make this extremely clear for the rest of the commission, this is our budget. This is a budget of the county commission. If taxes are raised, that will be responsibility not of the sheriff, but of the Brevard County Commission, to make that extremely clear. I don't know how any of us are going to vote, but to shirk this on the sheriff, any constitutional office, any department, the county manager, the county, staff is wrong. And just to be extremely clear, I will be voting against this because this is our budget. Oh, you are, the five of us up here, and we make the decisions. The sheriff presents us with a budget, and we make the decision whether or not to fulfill. There is a state mechanism. If he believes he is not get a fair budget with the state, they've seen this, he's more than welcome should he not get the budget he thinks he deserves. But to be very clear, we need to take, no matter what the outcome of this, we need, as individuals and as a commission, take a responsibility for that. So thank you, Commissioner Lober, for bringing this forward. And I understand this is just options, but these are options that I don't want to look at. And unfortunately, and it's very ironic because I'm doing the exact same thing that I just voted against last one, where I said I don't want to, where the rest of the commission said I don't want to look at the options for the trash heap. So, you know, I'm asking you to do the exact same thing here. Let's not look at these terrible options. Let's live within our means, and let's not support Commissioner Lober on his quixotic adventure.
Go ahead.
I'm not going to use a big word like that. Years ago, I probably would have had to look that up. And right now, I'm fairly confident I know what that means, but I'm not 100% certain. Now, with that said, again, I just want to emphasize, this is not, as you're well aware, by any means, a vote to say, we're increasing taxes. I certainly expect there to be options that do not involve a tax increase. And all else equal, that's where I'm inclined to go, were we to have to vote on a budget right now. But again, I just want to see what the different options are insofar as having different degrees of impact with the county departments. I can tell you, the last thing I want to do is start cutting critical needs in order to try to play this balancing game. I can tell you, I don't want to cut fire. I don't want to cut mosquito control. I don't want to cut our general fund. I don't want to cut roads and bridges. There are certain departments I don't want to cut at all. But that limits the amount of other areas we can cut to some that I really am not thrilled with cutting either, whether it be libraries or parks and rec. But, you know, one of the things that I've always maintained, both up here and now and there, and I anticipate I'll always maintain, is that public safety is one of, if not the most important functions of government. And if we're able to do what we need to do within a reasonable degree without increasing the tax, by all means, that's where I'll be. But I don't have any qualms looking at options that aren't obligating me to take those options. I think this is simply giving an additional set of possibilities for us to consider. And, you know, you may vote against it down the road. I may vote against it down the road. I just, I'd prefer to see what's out there. And I agree with you 100% that it's on us. It's not on the constitutional officers when we make budget adjustments. And if it is something where the taxes end up going up, then I'm going to have to live with that if I vote to support that. I don't know that I'm going to vote to support that, but we've got to look to see what the needs are and how we're able to fund them.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah, I'm not even sure this motion's necessary. We gave the county manager direction to try to stay within the aggregate without knowing any of the variables, knowing he's going to have to come back with something anyway. So that's fine if we're doing it. And it gives him the ability not to have any heartburn with what he's going to come back with. But I expect him to come back with some types of, he always gives us options that we can go through it. So I think this is just a fairly easy motion, and it's just responsible to do it. Because if the sheriff ends up needing 10 million because we have terrorist attacks, I'm not going to quit doing roads and parks and everything else. So to make this even decision logically, where he's going to have to come back with some numbers. And so county manager, I kind of looking forward to what you guys come back with, so.
Commissioner Lober?
And I just defer to Mr. Abate. If you feel comfortable that you can do this with absent a motion, I'll withdraw the motion. But if you feel more comfortable with this, then I'm happy to leave it and vote.
I think I clearly need a motion because, as you all will know, I specifically committed to the board during the workshop that I would not present a budget proposal that went above the aggregate. And you were very clear that that's where I needed to be. So if, and staff will be very happy to develop it in accordance with this, by the way, that was not a staff-driven, so you understand, that was not a staff-driven motion. That was a, you know, the sheriff wanted to know to be able to do some of the things he wanted to do, what direction would I need to do that in light of where we were?
And I apologize if it came across differently than that.
No, I just want to make sure. But yeah, we will definitely, I would really appreciate the motion if that's where we're going to go. And I think the way it was worded gives us that flexibility to go above, as well as give you an option that would be, you know, below the rollback uncertain of the MSTUs, and then the board will have to decide.
Or potentially multiple options that are below.
No, that's what I'm saying. I would anticipate there would be, you know, three. But it's too early to tell right now because there's a lot of information we don't have. You know, departments are only starting to develop their budgets. We won't have any preliminary numbers, even from the property appraiser until June. Those will all impact where we are. But this gives us the flexibility to give you a variety of things if that's where the board wants to be.
Okay, I'll maintain the motion in that case.
Can I ask one quick question, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Yeah. How much extra, Ms. Hayes, how much extra time is this going to, the work that goes into one budget is pretty incredible. If we ask you to come back with many different options, does that increase your workload exponentially?
Well, if I understand correctly, we're talking about coming back with options before the board goes on a break in June. Okay, I'm sorry, misunderstood.
This would be when we submit the tentative budget in July. That's what they're talking about. There are no other budget workshops scheduled unless the board did something different. And quite honestly, we don't have a lot of time. We've only got the couple of meetings, you know, in May. So we're talking about submitting multiple budget options in July.
And as much as I respect, Frank, this gets, this comes down to Jill. She's our, she works countless hours to put this together. And I just want to know how much extra work we're levying on you by asking you to come back with multiple options in a short period of time.
And I apologize for misunderstanding. If we're talking about, we're just talking about options for the ad valorem tax rates and the revenue that that would generate. So we can calculate different ad valorem options for the board. It's just calculating what millage rate would be required to generate a certain amount of revenue to stay within those different levels. So, you know, it wouldn't be an entire budget book, like you receive a tentative budget book, but just options on those ad valorem millage rates.
Thank you. And thank you for all the hard work you do to put together just one budget, so.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Commissioner Tobias, real quick, you said the sheriff could get a hold of the state and raise his income that way?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Yeah. There's a mechanism for the sheriff's office, any constitutional, any sheriff's office, should the money be appropriated from the county commission, not to his liking. There is an appeal process set up with the Department of Revenue. Sorry, my state statute's a little weak. Set up with the Department of Revenue where he can appeal the decision of the county commission.
Would he get it from the state, then, from the county budget?
I'm quite certain it comes back, comes back from us. But if he is not happy with the decision, yeah, we have, just to be record, we have a very, we have a wonderful sheriff, and I'm not just saying that because he's no longer here. But many times, the sheriff and county commissions are on opposite sides. It gets very contentious. Obviously, that being public safety, the state saw that that may, they need to have a mechanism, have a third party. And so that option is available to the sheriff, should he not receive the budget that he thinks is necessary to run his department.
Commissioner Lober?
Just real briefly, Ms. Hayes, and I apologize for dwelling on this, but I'm curious myself now. In terms of the additional amount of time that you reasonably anticipate you'd have to expend to prepare some of these options, is that something you'd measure in hours, days, or weeks?
In terms of just, it would be, you know, several hours to calculate a scenario on different tax rates. So just calculating a scenario would take several hours, once we have the information from the property appraiser's office. Putting the tentative budget together, that entire budget with all the information from the departments, that's a lot more, that's months of work. So I think we're talking about, as Frank mentioned, the, preparing the tentative budget in accordance with the direction of the workshop, but then also having options for different tax rates.
And that's what I'm looking for as well. And if it's something that's hours, I feel a lot better putting that on you than something that's going to really cripple your ability to accomplish work in the office. And if what I'm hearing is, if I'm understanding what you're saying correctly, this is not something that's going to somehow impact your ability to handle any other work obligations you may have. Is that a fair assessment?
That's correct.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Was there a motion? Oh, there was a second?
Motion, a second.
You made a motion, and Commissioner Pritchett made a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Item passes 4-1. Okay. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll be brief. Last week, we received a formal opinion from the Attorney General's Office responding to our question of whether the county has the authority to make the issuance of business tax receipts contingent upon the participation of e-Verify. The Attorney General confirmed our own county attorney's analysis that we do not, in fact, have the authority to require participation in e-Verify to get said business license. I want to thank the county attorney's office for their assistance in securing this opinion, which is very important information, not necessarily for the board, but certainly for the citizens and lawmakers. This opinion leaves no doubt as to why Representative Thad Altman's bill requiring businesses to use free e-Verify system is necessary. The county has done everything it can legally do to ensure that our own contractors use e-Verify. It is now up to the state to take the next step in making sure legal citizens and residents are treated fairly, and modern indentured servitude is not used by corrupt businesses in this county. So again, thank you for the support of the board to send that up to the Attorney General. Thank you for the Attorney General getting back with her opinion. And thank you for our legal staff helping facilitate all this.
Great. Commissioner Smith?
I have a question for Eden. On South Tropical Trail, we just repaved that. There were speed humps there, and they've been there since, I believe, the late 90s. They qualified at that time. The question exists now whether that road still qualifies for speed humps. So before we put money into just putting speed bumps back, I would like to ask staff to evaluate that, to see if it qualifies for speed humps before we spend the money.
I think that's going to be a public works issue. Mr. Denninghoff is an expert on speed humps, I believe.
So do I need to make a motion, or can I just direct staff to do that?
I think we have to look at it, and I have to, I think they have to make, they have to find certain criteria exist.
Right, exactly. That's, I know that. So that's what I'm asking. Do I need to make a motion, or can we just ask him to do the evaluation?
Oh, I think he needs a motion.
Okay. So I would like to make a motion that staff evaluates whether South Tropical Trail qualifies for speed humps.
Second.
I would ask one clarifying question. I would assume that you mean under the current rules and policies that are established by the board, as opposed to what existed at the time.
Correct.
Okay, I have, did you get the motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Tobias?
I'm going to be voting against this, not because of, sorry.
That's a shocker.
Not because, sorry. Not because of the sponsor, just, there's a policy in County Commission District III that we don't have speed humps. And, I'm sorry, and I want to be consistent on this, so.
Well, I'm not crazy about them either, but they were there. And so before I spend our money to put speed bumps back, I want to know whether I have to put them back there or if we have the discretion and say, they don't qualify.
I get it. I just, I'm just doing it for consistency, not against the sponsors, just to be clear.
You're doing it to be difficult. I'll just say it how it is.
Hate speed humps. I hate speed humps.
Pennsylvania Avenue, right? Brandywine area. Pennsylvania Avenue is the prime example of when you actually, and John Denninghoff will tell you, you actually need speed humps because there's no sidewalks, there's nowhere for anybody to walk on that road, and they fly down there like it's the Indy 500. Because when we took them out, because we were resurfacing, micro resurfacing that road, I believe, or just putting like a light surface on it.
We were resurfacing the road, yes.
Yeah. We, the road has to settle for a couple of weeks. And it was like, it was chaos deciding on whether or not those needed to go back in. But I'm really glad we did because when they were out, I'll tell you what, staff didn't have to go out there long to see how fast they were driving down that road. And it's the same, you know, people every time. But I'm not a huge fan either. But I'd like to think that this is another one of those defer to the district sort of things. And so I think it's a great idea that you're studying it before you just throw them back in.
Yeah, because I will encourage reflection from the folks that live there as well.
Right. Awesome.
Could I ask another question? Encourage to me, we've not done this before, so I'm trying to anticipate things that might arise. The normal policy approach is that there's a citizen-driven petition that is developed and by the neighborhood. And the, if it qualifies under the technical requirements, which don't have anything to do with the petition, that we then do the study, a full-blown study, which then talks about the speed of the vehicles and what the crash history is and all the rest. And then it's, under the policy currently, it's up to the commissioner of the district to either agree to it or to not do it. In this particular case, the, we don't have a petition. There hasn't been a petition since we created the policy, as far as I know. And so I just want to make sure, we could go ahead and study it now, look at it, and come up with a full study absent the petition. Don't know if the board wants us to get the petition together. Don't know, currently don't have somebody in the neighborhood that is going to carry the petition around, which is the way it's typically done. We could produce a report that says to the commissioner or come back to the full commission about it, absent the petition. So I'm just looking for a little bit of direction there on that. And so we're deviating somewhat. But I understand the question, because I don't believe it would qualify under the current rules for speed humps. The classification of road it is, I believe, is a minor arterial road, and that would not qualify. And so it would stop there under the current.
Well, that's what I would anticipate. And we haven't had, my office has not had any requests. But I anticipate at some point, because we've just repaved it, that somebody will request some information as to if they are going to get speed humps. I would like to have.
But if it's ultimately, I don't mean to interrupt, I apologize, but if it's ultimately your decision anyway, if you don't think they belong there in your public works direct, I mean, you could save a lot of the aggravation.
Okay. Well, then I withdraw that motion.
No, I'm saying if you choose to.
I'll cross the bridge if we get to it.
I think, I think we still need a motion, Commissioner, simply because...
They were in?
The way we're, yes. The way we're doing it is, when we resurface a road, we restore the speed humps, and we put them back in to meet current standards on a speed hump. And that's been our policy. That's been our approach, and which is consistent with the policy that the board has established about speed humps to start out with. So this, this is a little bit different. I would point out that this road was, I believe, the very first road that got speed humps in Brevard County, and it predated the establishment of the policies that we have.
Okay, so I think you need to change your motion if you don't, if you want them to hold off, maybe?
I think the way it was, the motion that was made, I think Mr. Denninghoff has the direction, without the petition, to determine up or down based on the current policy, and that will give you the information that you want.
Yeah, let's do that. Okay. My motion stands.
Commissioner Tobias?
Can we modify the motion that the discretion ends, or the discretion is with the commissioner in which district it resides?
It already is.
Well, that need, the motion's completely, I mean, we're going a different mechanism now. now. So if we're going to do that, we need to be very clear that this is not going to amend that.
Let's add that.
Okay, we'll add it. Right. Okay, so that's added to the motion. Does your second still stand?
Yeah.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
You got to oppose, right? Are you going to oppose? He said you're going to oppose it.
No, if it got changed where the discretion was with the member, I think that's Commissioner Smith's determination, so that he has it.
Okay.
But we just changed the process. I just want to make sure that authority ends with the district.
We didn't really change the process.
We did. We circumvented, we circumvented the petition process.
No, because the things were already in place. That's why, it's not required. Motion passes five oh. Let's move on.
Okay, and I have one other thing, and this will be quick. I want to thank the Marine Resources Council for giving me the award for outstanding service to the Indian River Lagoon by an elected official. So I want to thank them publicly.
That's nice. All right, and there's me. Just a quick, I have a chance possibly, and I, you know, I still have this sticker on my, on my credit card. I don't even claim mileage, I don't do anything, but I want to ask the board's permission to possibly go to DC for a day or two, if that's okay?
It's on business or vacation?
It's obviously on commission business.
I make a motion to approve your travel.
Second.
Okay, it's about the Space Force stuff and it's about a meeting at the Pentagon. So if I can get that meeting and those couple of meetings, it's going to be a big deal. So motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith, yes?
Just a real, real quick question. Do you have any idea what it's going to run?
I don't. It's just flight. I don't even think, I think my hotel's covered, I believe.
Private jet, or?
Oh, I doubt it. I've never flown first class, so that's a honest admission, isn't it? So, okay.
Fair enough.
You can probably, you can be certain, I'll be economy. All right. Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five oh. I'm surprised you voted for that, Commissioner Tobias.